Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Falcone.
Here.
Councilmember Pascal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
And Mayor Curtis.
Here. Our study session tonight is on two items. First, we'll have a discussion on the Houghton Village financing options. Second, we will receive an update on the SCADA strategic plan and implementation. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. City Manager.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So our illustrious Finance Director unfortunately has a very scratchy throat. So I would normally introduce him to introduce this topic, but, and there's a small of us, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Kevin Pellstring, our Financial Planning Manager, who's going to talk about this topic. I also want to let the council know that this is about refinancing the bonds, but in the memo, we talk about potentially waiting till the RFP for Houghton Village comes back. So I've also asked Allison Zike, our Deputy Director of Planning and Building, to just give a quick update on the RFP itself as part of the presentation. So with that, I will turn over to Mr. Pellstring.
Thank you, City Manager. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, members of the community, we have a short presentation tonight, as City Manager mentioned, on some options for paying back the interfund loan that we used in 2022 to purchase the Houghton Village property. So state regulations are that we have a plan to pay that back within around three years. So we're coming up to that deadline, although planning is still going on, you know, exact usage. So we have casting characters, a cast of characters to kind of lay out some options for you all, get some feedback tonight, and we'll bring back some next steps at a future meeting. So in addition to Allison Zike, before we pass it off to her, we have Maggie Marshall from our Financial Advisor, PFM, Senior Managing Consultant, as well as Deanna Gregory, our Bond Counsel from Pacific Law. So we'll give a brief update from Allison on the RFP, and then we'll dive right into some of the details.
Perfect. All right, I think that makes me character number one. Evening, Council. Just wanted to quickly remind you kind of where you've been on the Houghton Village project as a whole, and then what's going on right now with the active request for proposals. So to remind you, the last time that you talked about the planning part of Houghton Village was back in January when we brought you the draft development plan for the site and got some input from you. At that point in January, we had a pretty good idea of what could fit on the site, how many units we might expect to be able to produce on the site, what types of community benefits and/or commercial spaces we thought were possible on the site within what we've now come to call the Development Framework. Also had council kind of prioritize potential community benefits, and that's all incorporated into the draft development plan that we're now calling a Draft Development Framework. So that was where we got in January, which is also when you told us, hey, before we really take the next step on adopting something like a development plan, let's take this out and see what the market is and see if anyone's interested in actually doing this with us. And so that's where we're at now. So as of right now, the city has issued a request for proposals to seek a potential developer or development team for the property. The RFP request is that people give us proposals that are generally aligned with the development framework that you've been working on. We do, I did want to note that we are allowing for submittals that might vary from what's laid out in the development framework, such as someone that might want to propose developing only three stories on the site, someone that might want to propose more. All we ask in the RFP is that if they do propose something different than the framework, that they explain how it still is achieving the types of community benefits that council has laid out. I listed here, I'm not going to read them out loud or make you listen to me reading them out loud, what's included in the RFP, what we're asking from people, but we do expect it's going to be something of a phased process. So asking for some initial information from proposers now, what's your concept for the site, what's your funding experience, what's your development experience, and how do you think you'd go about it? And just to go over the schedule really quick, the RFP is active right now. We're holding an information session for potential proposers on April 7th. We've already got several questions from potential proposers, so we're excited by that. We think there's a good amount of interest in, out there, and have heard from several teams that are planning on attending that information session with the city staff. And then proposals are due on April 28th. Our plan when, after that deadline passes, is for staff to evaluate the proposals and create a short list that then could potentially be shared with council. So that is it from me, but available for any questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Allison. Any questions, anyone?
We're just eager to see the proposals.
Us too.
Yeah.
Wait, Councilmember.
Oh, Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. I'm eager to see proposals, but, you know, I hope that we have a realistic RFP that people want to bid on. And I hope we get realistic quickly with this RFP, because I don't think time's unlimited here, and I don't think we're going to get everything we hoped and dreamed of. But if we get realistic, we may get something instead of selling this property. And so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Allison.
Thank you, Allison. So now we'll pass it off to Maggie and Deanna to go through some of the next slides.
All right. So again, Maggie Marshall with PFM Financial Advisors. We are financial advisor to the city mostly in the context of debt issuance. I'm here with Deanna Gregory. She can introduce herself briefly, but I think most of you know her.
It's like coming home. It's so good to see you all in person.
Yeah. Well, it's funny, I was telling Deanna, I think I was actually, the last time I was here in this building was back in 2019, 2018, doing a Bonds 101 session. So, good to be back. We're going to just roughly kind of walk through the introduction, kind of where we're at in terms of the financing of the property acquisition, talk a little bit about what bond anticipation notes are, our PFM's recommendation for the method of sale for the bond anticipation notes, what the issuance process looks like and what the timeline looks like, and then we'll open it up for questions. But feel free to chime in with questions along the way. So to sort of put everything in context, back in '22, the city purchased the Houghton Village property, and a three-year interfund loan was used for that purchase. At that time, the plan, I guess, moving forward to now, as we, as we know, the plan for the long-term development of that property isn't exactly known. We understand that, you know, the RFP is out and there's plans in process, but it's not quite at a point where we have a defined path for what the future of that property looks like. Issuance of a bond anticipation note would allow the city to repay the interfund loan while maintaining flexibility for future use. And part of that process means the bond anticipation note would be issued on a taxable basis. Historically, most of the city's debt has been issued on a tax-exempt basis with long-term limited-tax general obligation bonds. Because of the situation, tax-exempt debt right now is not really an option, and Deanna can probably go into a little bit more detail on that. So our recommendation, PFM's recommendation, if the city does move forward with the note, would be to pursue issuance through a direct bank placement. I'll talk a little bit more about what that is on the next slide. I'll try to make it, I'll try to. I have good whispering hearing. So, in recent years, the city's debt issuance has been through long-term bond issuances, done through a public bond offering, bonds sold on the public market. Bank placements, or direct bank placements, sometimes we call them private placements, depending on the scenario, is a more cost-effective and efficient way to issue debt where you have a relatively small size and a shorter financing term. It also allows for flexibility with prepayment options. So as the plans for the property kind of develop over time, you might be able to have the option to prepay that loan and take it out with long-term debt, you know, in one and a half years, in two years, in three years. You're not held to the typical kind of 10-year call option, or if you were to go out with a public bond offering for a bond anticipation note, you would be tied to the final maturity of the, of the notes, which would be determined, you know, essentially now, or in, over the next month or two. The process for issuing a bank placement involves an informal RFP process. So the city would, or I guess PFM on behalf of the city would send out a request for proposals to a number of commercial banks. We would get responses and kind of evaluate the options. We could look into, you know, various prepayment options, financing terms, kind of different structures all at the same time. And then at that point, we look through the options, the city makes a decision as to, you know, whether or not there's a good option there, and we can compare it to what a public bond offering would look like. So there's a comparison table sort of describing the differences between the two. I think one of the, one of the questions that came up along the way is, you know, the concept of transparency in a public bond offering, that's really referring to the transparency of the bond market in general. And when you have publicly offered bonds, they are, they're public. You can see all of the pricing detail and all of the kind of fine interest rates per maturity and all of that stuff. It's, it's available for, for the public to see. Pricing is also tied to published indices. So we talk about BVAL as the tax-exempt index that tax-exempt bonds are kind of tied to. So it's much easier for us to think about a public bond offering and give a pretty good estimate of where we think the city's bonds would price, based on a number of, you know, comparable transactions that are out there on the market. Where a bank placement, we don't really have a very fine-tuned estimate of what the interest rate could be. We can look at recent transactions that we're aware of. At the same time, with the RFP process, you get the proposals back, you can evaluate the different options and compare them to one another, and at that point, compare them to what we would think a public bond offering would be. So it offers a lot of flexibility. Bank placements are suitable for shorter-term transactions, smaller-size transactions, and they also don't involve a credit rating. You don't have to go through the, the formal disclosure process, putting together a preliminary official statement, which takes a lot of time and effort on, on the city staff. So it's, it's, it's really, from our perspective, suitable as, at least a path to pursuing as an initial starting point. Anything you want to add there? Okay.
Councilmember Sweet.
Yeah.
I know you said that we didn't have to have a credit rating, but we have one and we're really proud of it.
Yeah.
Does our financial status have bearing on, on whether banks want to buy us?
Yeah, I definitely think they take that into consideration. Sometimes they will even, you know, include comments about that in their proposal, and they'll take that into account when they're, you know, evaluating different interest rates. But from a bank's perspective, it's, it's that, but it's also the bank's cost of funds, their, you know, ability or capacity to lend kind of on a broad basis. And it could be, you know, even relationships with the city. It could be a variety of factors that go into how they're pricing things. So we would think, we would, we would expect a good response from banks on a, on a high, very high credit rating.
Go ahead.
Just for context sake, I want to let you know that one of the four debt issuances that Kirkland has right now was a direct placement, bank placement, and that was the funding of the City Hall remodel in 2015, a $5 million issuance, was done directly with the banks.
Looks like the only question. No, you got a green light?
Okay, there you go. All right. That is a great segue to the next slide. I'll repeat myself. All right. So I'm going to talk for a bit about just bond anticipation notes and just kind of give some of the legal framework for bands, as we lovingly call them, because we, in the bond world, have to have a cute name for everything. And then on the next slide, I'll talk about the ordinance process, because of course, being debt of the city, this issuance of a ban, if you choose to go that route, of course, will require an ordinance of the city and official action of the city. Similar to the bank loan that was just mentioned, bond anticipation notes are very similar to bank loans. The, the main difference between a kind of more traditional bank loan and, or what we refer to as a bank loan, and a, that's evidenced by a bond or a note, is that in that context, principal and interest are repaid over time, similar to other bonds. With a bond anticipation note, the expectation is that there'll be interest-only payments until final maturity. And the reason for that is because even though there'll be a pledge of, in this case, the full faith and credit of the city and regular property taxes of the city, the plan is to not necessarily use those available or use those funds, but use proceeds of long-term takeout financing. So it's really, it really serves in more of the kind of context that a lot of us are familiar with, really of a construction loan or interim financing. And as was mentioned earlier, the intent here, which is a little different than prior private placements that the city has done, is because of the current use of that facility, or that property, and the kind of unknowns surrounding use. It was mentioned that we anticipate that this note would be issued as taxable, and that's because of the current use of that facility. It's not being used for governmental purposes. And the plan as of right now is to continue the current private business use from a federal tax law verbiage perspective, is to continue the current use. And then, once there's a plan in place, if it becomes good city use, then the plan would be, I anticipate, would be to issue long-term tax-exempt bonds to take out this financing, and then roll that into a longer-term financing. So in many respects, a ban is very similar to any other private placement, where there is one investor, that's the bank, and they hold a bond or a note to evidence the obligation to repay. As I mentioned, there's a pledge of very common, a full faith and credit, regular property taxes. But again, that only covers interest, is expected to cover interest. Principal will be covered by long-term financing. In all other respects, federal tax laws require, or apply, as I mentioned, state law requirements apply. All of your kind of typical limited-tax general obligation financing rules apply. Which brings us to the ordinance. So as I mentioned, this ban, if you choose to go that route, will take official action by the council. And so we would expect to bring back an ordinance that would outline some of the common things that you would see in your bond ordinances. So, you know, a not-to-exceed-principle amount, depending on if at that time we know who the bank is, we would anticipate incorporating the bank terms. Otherwise, one option would be to delegate, similar to what this council has done before, the authority to approve the final placement with the bank and the selection of the bank, subject to parameters that the council would approve. And again, it would identify the source of security and that plan to repay the bonds at, oh, sorry, the ban at maturity with proceeds of long-term takeout financing. I do want to note that it's really important to know that the city is not obligated to issue those long-term bonds. That will require separate council action in the event that that is ultimately the route that can go. The ordinance will also reference that the city could decide to use available funds, or the city could, in fact, extend this ban. There's, there's a lot of options, but it kind of embedded in the, in the plan, of course, is to do long-term takeout financing. All right, so timeline and considerations.
All right, timeline and considerations. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. Generally speaking, the direct bank placement or bank loan process takes six to eight weeks. We would first determine a preliminary plan of finance, and that could include, you know, various options that we present in an RFP to potential lenders. We would send out that RFP to potential lenders. We like to give around three weeks. Sometimes we can get away with two and a half, but we would kind of target three weeks for distrib, the timeline between distribution and the due date for proposals from lenders. Those two things could, in theory, happen this month, adoption of a bond ordinance, as Deanna just went through. And then from that point, it's really just kind of negotiating the terms with the bank, finalizing documents and closing. So it's a lot different than the process that the city would typically go through for a long-term publicly offered bonds. And again, you know, the city can solicit term sheets and view the options from banks prior to making that final decision to move forward. The same is technically true with a public bond offering, but the, the process here allows to kind of view different options first, and at that point, we could also compare that to what we think a public bond offering would look like. But it's a little more flexible in terms of really finalizing the plan to move forward.
Is that your last slide?
Yeah.
Okay, Council, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Maggie and Deanna. For the whole temporary nature of bond anticipation notes, what's kind of the bookends of the timeframe on this? You know, as we look at the RFPs, how much time are we giving ourselves to come up with a final plan?
I'll give the legal answer, and then I'll turn it over to Maggie for the practical answer. There's no limit under state law for how long a ban can be outstanding, and so we've seen them anywhere from a year to a handful of years, three years. So I guess that's there. So there's no limit from a state law perspective.
Yeah, I, I think it would be fair to say that typically we would see something three years or less. That might depend on what banks are willing to do. The fact that the city would be paying interest only until the maturity date makes it, you know, more attractive to, to give a loan or a bond anticipation note with a shorter term. But again, you know, you hit that final date and you have options in terms of extending the loan, doing the long-term bond issuance, or kind of finding the different path. Or kind of conversely, you could, depending on the options, partway through the term, if you have flexible prepayment, you could make that change, you know, one and a half, two years down the road.
And then a question for staff, is the length of the ban going to be part of the parameters that you've talked about? Because I could see, like, I can see this process taking three years before we line up a partner and achieve our vision.
Yes, this is a short answer. I mean, we, we hope to know through the RFP process and in the council discussions, probably in the next two months, kind of like the game plan of what to do with Houghton Village, whether it's to sell it or whether it's to redevelop it. And I think then shortly after that, we'd have a better sense of how long. So I'm guessing we would just say the two- to three-year period for repayment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
If we put this up for sale in three months, and it sells, can we put ourselves in a position where there's not major penalties to that?
You mean sell the property?
The property, yes.
I mean, yeah, in theory, we could ask for a total flexible prepayment options, which would mean any time after it's issued, it can be prepaid. We would have to see, you know, what the options look like from the banks, but I, and those, those options may come at a higher interest rate. So you might have the ability to prepay at any time, but the interest rate, and I'm, this is just numbers I'm saying, it could be, you know, five and a half percent versus 5% if you're looking to, you know, hold it to the final maturity date. So there is a cost to that, but it is, it is doable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple thoughts, and then a couple questions. So first thought, I was a lot more excited about the ban before I came into this conversation. I will say that I really appreciate your guys' presentation, but because it was a technical financing and legal discussion, it was sort of rife with negative soundbites that I think we have to face head-on, you know. So we're talking about debt, the company, the company, the city taking on debt. We've talked about this being a more expensive form of financing. We've talked about this being a less transparent form of financing. We've talked about it, unknown, and I realize for legal purposes and for purposes of a ban, and to be in a position to do a ban to extend this period, we've got to talk about how there's unknown uses. But in fact, we actually know a lot about what we have planned for this site and what our goals are. So I do want, so I'm just telling you, like, it was a little depressing, I got to be honest. Maybe the City Manager wants to respond to that in a second. So, but I get it. It's a, it's a very technical financing, legal discussion. I'm a lawyer in, and I do financing, so I know how sometimes you have to have a, you know, particularly technical conversation. I do want to, you know, my touchstones are going to be fiscal responsibility, legal permissibility, we've talked about that. And then this, is this, is this a suitable measure for a short-term extension of this process? You know, if we're, if it's fiscally responsible, legally permissible, and it's a, it's a suitable way to give ourselves a little bit more time and space to complete the RFP process, complete conversations with the people, with the developers who are responding to the RFP. One thing made me panic a little bit, and that's when Deputy Mayor said he thought it was going to take three years. I, I actually, that's a question for staff. Like, I'm really envisioning RFPs coming in in the next month or two, us having a sense of what we're seeing from our potential partners who would develop the site. Also, we talked about selling it or developing it. It's actually sell it or partner with somebody who is agreeing to develop it. So, but I, I'm hoping we have a lot of visibility in, in just a few months as to what is possible, and be in a position to make, start making some smart decisions about whether it makes sense just to return this to the market, or whether to continue with a partner, a development partner. City Manager, can you give me your thoughts on?
Yeah, no, I think, hopefully this will be.
I know you're looking into a crystal ball, but.
Hopefully this will be helpful, and please, all the characters jump in if I get this incorrect. So, first of all, the goal is to present the council with sort of a go-no-go choice in 2025. Like, I think everybody wants to know, like, hey, what is the future of this from the city's perspective? Is the city going to make a partnership proposal that happens, or is the city going to determine the things we wanted to achieve aren't feasible, and we're going to basically put it back on the market? So the goal, the reason we put in the memo to look at this after we get the RFPs is because we, we keep the RFPs up to be a lower level of detail than you might get for a specific, you did an RFP and you're the winner. It was to say, tell us in general what you think might work and how you might finance it in general, but not like really detailed. We're not making someone spend hundreds of hours of work to come up with a proposal. It's really to get these concepts. Once you have those concepts, you can look at and say, hey, there's three things we're super interested in. We do think there's a there there that we want to pursue. Then we'd come back to you and say, great, then we should consider doing the bond anticipation notes. If the other happens, you're looking at it, and everybody said, no way, it just can't happen, it's not going to work. Then we wouldn't issue the bond anticipation notes. We'd say, okay, now we got to have to probably put this on the market. My understanding from Michael is, if we made that decision, say, May or June, to put it back on the market, we don't have to pay off our loan till it sells, so that could still be months. Like, we don't have to sunset the debt in May. We just have to have the plan for how the debt's going to be sunset. So I'm going to check that, make sure that everyone agrees with that before I go on.
As long as we have a documented process that we are going to pay back, because what the state auditor doesn't like is a permanent diversion of funds out of, out of certain funds. So we, as long as we have a, a plan to pay it back and, and a, at a timeline, that will benefit us in our audit. And 2025 won't be audited until mid-2026, and so we will definitely have a plan and place by then. And 2025 won't be audited until mid-2026, and so we will definitely have a plan and please by then.
So a couple of other things that I'd add. So the goal then is first is, you know, sort of the go-no-go, we like what we're seeing, we want to keep going. We issue that bond anticipation notes. We asked the financial advisors in the bond council, what are the sort of best ways to refinance the debt, right? And the most straightforward is a 20-year bond or 30-year bond. So what they share with us is that's the least flexible for the city because you can't call it for five or 10 years. And if you want to call it soon, you have to pay a lot more money in interest. So knowing that we might have someone who just buys the whole thing from us, then you don't want to issue a 30-year debt if you want to just use that, what you get, and pay off our own debt, right? Or if somebody comes back and says, we would like the city to leave $2 million in the deal, and in return, you get this additional public benefit, or we want to leave the city to leave, you know, $4 million in the deal. We'd only want to issue debt for whatever we were choosing to do, right? So the, what the team told us is that the best way to maintain that flexibility is the bond anticipation notes, because then you have the total ability to sunset as much or all of the debt as you want to over time, right? So, but we're not intending to not know what we're doing for three years. And ideally, we'd have a partner by the end of this year sometime or sooner. And then ideally, we would have a structure that would come back to council for approval well before the three years is up. And then you would know what was happening next. And our goal still remains that the city recovers the money that we put out, right? But we don't know until we hear from the proposals exactly what that might be.
Okay, that sounds a lot better than.
And I want to reemphasize what Maggie said about transparency, which is, it isn't that we don't know. It's that we will get the bank proposals, and then we can compare them with what the public market is. So it's not transparency to all of you, it's just not having all the indexes when you do it, right?
Right.
So you'll be able to tell how much you might have paid if you'd gone the other way, but we don't know what each bank is going to give to us as part of this placement process, right? That's my understanding.
Good, all right. Well, thank you. That's really helpful to have that clarified. And it's really helpful to have a better sense of the timeframe. I really, I think this, you know, it's, to me, it sounds like I want to spend some more time, obviously, talking to the team about this proposal as we move the next step. But I can see how this would be suitable for a short-term extension of this process. I'm really glad to hear that we're going to know a lot more, hopefully, in 20, in this calendar year. Fiscal responsibility will be something, will be a touchstone, we'll continue to analyze until the time comes to actually approve an ordinance. And then I think legal permissibility, we've covered, so. But just sharing with city manager and staff sort of the way I'm thinking about this. But again, at the end of the day, we have very concrete vision of what we want for this. And it's very clear, well, it's pretty apparent that what we would have gotten from the, from just a market-rate developer, you know, three years ago, would not have provided some of the community benefits that were, are part of our vision. So I still share that vision, and I want to give us time and space to fulfill this process and see it through. And I just appreciate the clarification of how it's going to go and the clarity we should have in a short period of time. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pascal?
Thank you. So the discussion so far has been really helpful. This is, there's just a lot of moving parts here that are, it's tough to get your mind around and to really kind of understand what affects the other. And when I think about this is, for me, I really want to see the results of this RFP process because that's going to give me greater or less comfort, right, about kind of the direction where we're going and the type of financing and payback terms that we're looking for and what's going to make sense. So the more that we can hold off on making any kind of specific decisions until we see that our, the results of the RFP process would give me more comfort in kind of that process forward. So I understand that we have to kind of continue moving things forward in terms of this short-term bonds, just given the timing. But I like this aspect. It sounds like we're going to have a decision point, though, in May, where we can either go forward or not with the short-term bonds. That's what I'm hearing.
That's the hope. It depends on the actual proposals you get. You may have further questions. But yes, the goal is, you know what the market is telling you as to how they might redevelop the property in May, and then you can decide if you want to issue more debt or not.
Yeah, what would be helpful for me is to kind of see a decision point kind of flow chart of, well, and the flow chart in my mind, because there's a lot of things going on here, would be, I'm also interested in just the whole funding and that we put forward towards this property and what we anticipate, or what could additional funding be needed and necessary to realize the vision or the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. So how much have we spent to date to purchase and then to upgrade, you know, the facilities? How much have we taken in so far from revenue of rent? And then, you know, there's then, there's going to be this cost of financing. And then there's potentially additional debt that we'll have to incur, given the results of the RFP, right? I'm fully expecting the RFPs to come back and say, like you mentioned, that, yeah, we can do that, but we want the city to pony up $2, $3 million or whatever that is to get those benefits that we're looking for, because otherwise, it's not going to pencil out. So I just want to see that, that total picture. That's what's hard, that's what's hard. It's like, I don't want to kind of just make decisions in isolation. I want to see kind of the big picture and the decision steps and the decision-making and when that has to happen. That would be really helpful, because this is, this is pretty complicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tim Chisen, you had another comment? Question?
I think I'll reserve my comments for another 90 days. I do want to see how the RFP process comes back, but I don't want this to drag on for years. You know, I want to have a decision point in 60 or 90 days and decide whether we, as a city, this is an endeavor we want to move forward with or go back to, to vote this time and money to other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's all we have, I believe.
Okay, because what I'm hearing is RFP process and then go from there.
And then come back. Great.
Okay.
With the decision.
Thank you both of you, and thank you for all your help on the PFAC, on the Parks Funding Exploratory Committee.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, as we're getting ready to switch, our next topic is the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Strategic Plan, or SCADA, Strategic Plan Implementation. And Public Works Director is on a rare vacation. We have our Deputy Director, Chris Gavagian, here, Deputy Director of Operations, and also Tom Kreist, our Utility Operations Manager.
Oh, there we go.
Hey. Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Kreist. I'm the Utility Operations Manager. And I'm here to talk to you about the update on the SCADA strategic plan and the implementation. So first, we'd like to start with a little background of Kirkland's water and wastewater system. We maintain about 130 miles of both water and wastewater infrastructure. We have eight pressure gradients. We have six sewer lift stations. We maintain about 12,000 connections, and we have about 55,000 water and wastewater customers. So we'll talk about supervisory control and data acquisition. So that is SCADA. SCADA is used on many different industries. It's not just for water or wastewater treatment. It's used in manufacturing. It's used in fuel and energy production. So what do we monitor here in Kirkland? We monitor water pressure, water flow, tank levels, wet well levels for our sewer system, our pump status for both water and wastewater, and many different alarms. So many people wonder what that actually means. So I think what would help is a real-world example that actually happened about two years ago. This was a regular day. It was a workday. We were manning our operations maintenance center, and our SCADA alarm went off. We affectionately call it the voice in the ceiling. So the voice in the ceiling says, low pressure at S3. So S3 is a critical station for us. We purchased all of our water through Cascade Water Alliance from the city of Seattle. There's three locations that we have. We call them S1, S2, and S3. So S3 had low pressure. Well, immediately, the operators in the room know that that's a big deal, right? But as you're walking to the SCADA system, you realize if there is low water pressure at one of the Seattle stations, we'd have it at all three if it was a Seattle issue. So now you've eliminated one possibility, because you know that can't be true. So now you're down to two other possibilities. One could be a system failure of some sort with our actual instrumentation or our computer system. So you're hoping for that as you walk in there. But the first thing you look for is, you don't look for pressure, you look for flow. So you look at your S1, and S1 is at a normal rate of flow. You look at S2, it's at a normal rate of flow. But you look at S3, and it's off the charts. The gauge is pinned. So immediately, you know water's going somewhere. So in that particular instance, staff called, our field staff, and said, S3 is by Lake Washington Botec. Said, send everybody up to Lake Washington Botec. Something has let loose. So that's what they did. And within a half a mile of the Botec, we found a contractor who had made a mistake. They'd gotten rid of the thrust block prematurely. It was energized, and we had an eight-inch water main running full force. Our staff was able to isolate that break, contain the water properly without causing other damage to turn off before we received one phone call. So we were there, I can't remember the exact minutes, so, but we were there quicker than people could actually respond to the problem, call us, and ask for help. We were already there to help. So that is one critical element of SCADA. I could go on and on about many more, but I know we got a presentation to do, so. You'll see within this presentation that our system is past its useful life and needs upgraded, and we'll document that. First, we'll start with the funding background. Oh, I apologize. The previous slide, that was our freshly pressure-washed North Reservoir, by the way. If you're wondering where that was, that was. All right, so the funding background. Back in the 2122 budget, $80,000 were a service package to develop a SCADA strategic plan. During that process, we started to work with our internal and external customers to develop the RFP, and we realized we had an opportunity here to make this better. We had an opportunity to really look into this, to do it thoroughly, and we realized that 80K was not, that 80,000 was not sufficient. So we requested a budget adjustment for another $67,000 for a total budget of $147,000 for the strategic plan. In fall of '24, we requested an adjustment to the CIP for $1.8 million for the actual implementation plan. The picture there is the mainframe at the operations and maintenance center showing communications gear, some relays, some internet switches, and above that is the PLCs, which we'll talk about here in a minute. The current status, so the strategic plan is in its final stages of staff review. We will need minor adjustments before we can call it a final plan. One of the things that we're actually, I have a meeting about tomorrow, is to start our cellular study. We need to change how we communicate with our stations, and we need to modernize them. And we're going to modernize them through cellular communications, which, again, I'll talk about here in a minute. And then the other thing we want to do is we want to establish our, start to establish our construction bid documents. We need the finalization of the plan before we can go to bid with the $1.8 million, and that's what we're working on right now. This picture here is actually at our Yarl Bay Lift Station. This is a picture of an OIT, which is Operator Interface Terminal, and it's a picture of the inside of the cabinet. You can see some of the PLCs that we'll talk about later. So in the overview of the SCADA, we had a gap analysis. The gap analysis of planning exercise helped determine current performance metrics that can be improved by updating current methodology or technology. We did evaluate seven of the operating systems. The three that are highlighted and underlined, we determined to be the most critical, and the next three slides will refer to those. We also looked at the SCADA workstation. We looked at the private branch exchange, which is how we are currently communicating, and that is basically copper phone lines. So overhead copper phone lines is how we're currently communicating. And we want to switch to an internet protocol cellular form of communication. Also evaluated was the program logic controllers that I mentioned earlier, the PLCs, and the operator interface terminals. And that station you see there is actually S2, is one of the three Seattle stations. That is the PLC and the operator interface terminal. So the first one that we'll talk about as being most critical is the network. The picture to the right there is the network architecture of, what particular note is you can see that there is redundancy, especially at the top of that architecture. You can see that there's multiple workstations, both at the maintenance center and then our servers. Our current system is well past its end of life. Again, the plan is recommending that we no longer use the existing copper phone lines, switch to a cellular private network. Private networks provide a dedicated, secure, and high-performance connectivity to all 17 of our remote sites. Our master telemetry unit, this is the main computer at the maintenance center, is a single computer that system architecture showed multiple computers and multiple redundancies. Right now, we're relying on the one computer that is, again, well past its hardware support, and the software is long since outdated. Our remote sites. Some of the remote sites have been updated through the years, either through, you know, smaller projects, individual components that we're wearing out and not working the way they should do. So the plan will include an overview of each of the 17 sites. And these will be those bid documents that I'm talking about, with specific recommendations to be included for the project. That particular panel right there, which looks extremely messy, I agree, I'll admit, is for our most complicated wastewater station that is located in our plaza, right down the road. There is three other key recommendations to the strategic plan. One, we talked about a little bit, was the cybersecurity requirements. We need secure communications, next-generation firewalls, and updated password security, similar to what we've done with our PCs here. We need standardized SCADA screens. Excuse me, I knew I'd miss that. That's saying SCADA 20 times in a presentation, too many times. Again, this is for, not only for consistency from one water station to the other, but from one wastewater station to the other, and also for other systems, from system to system. We do do training with other cities and other agencies. Our system right now is dated, like we said before. And when we go and look at other SCADA systems, we, it's hard for us as operators to determine what exactly they are controlling and what their parameters are because of our, our screens are so dated. There is a standard practice for this, and we need to update ours to it. And then the third other key recommendation is access to data reporting. Later tonight, you guys will be, you guys, council, excuse me, will be looking at, I believe you are, it's for the Westa Market project. We'll be talking about that later on. We used a lot of our SCADA data to develop this site for the Westa Market. And the reason being is there's three sewer basins Westa Market. All three of those go to a sewer lift station. So we can see in events of high rain that we have a lot of what's called INI, inflow and infiltration. So we know that this project will be critical for that area, and we use the data to start to define the key areas of that neighborhood and where we could have key projects that have the most impact on reducing INI. So the implementation is going to be, implementation is going to be a three-phase sequence. The pre-work we're doing right now, we're doing the cell study. We're investigating possible alternate communications, including fiber. There is one station that we are likely going to put on fiber or a wireless bridge. If the cell connectivity isn't well, we'll be able to connect from one station to the other, and we're starting that project right now. We will prioritize the initial sites to start with. Then that will be the end of phase two, or, excuse me, phase one. We'll start phase two, which will mean we'll roll out the cellular communications. We'll start Phase Two, which will mean we'll roll out the cellular communications to all the remaining sites. We'll have dual communications in place during this time. It's going to take a while for all the sites, for us to make sure that the new system is going to work, to make sure that the old system is going to maintain as we're transitioning, and then transitioning each of the stations one by one. And that is Phase Two B, is to cut over the sites and upgrade to the current SCADA. The final phase will be remove the old SCADA and all the old outdated equipment, and then we'll cancel any remaining frame relay network leases and remove the additional equipment. Keep forgetting about the pictures. So this picture is the 650 pump station. This is located at our south reservoir. This is a picture of our existing panel and our operator interface terminal. At the top of the picture on the left is the PLCs that we were talking about, and then there's individual components throughout this panel. And then, we did have the opportunity, through our new, our project with WashDOT for the new 85th crossing that you're all familiar with, we did replace one of our Kirkland stations. This happens to be K2, and this is an example of a new panel that we, this is an example of our new standard. Isn't exactly how they will be because our communications network isn't set up the way that I talked about before, how we have to implement that together. So this is running partially the old technology, but this is what the new cabinets will look So now, how do we maintain it? The strategic plan identifies that all components will have a lifespan between five to 10 years. These are industry standard cycles, but not universal for all applications. So we know that within the next five years, we need to look at our equipment. We need to see if our equipment is still supported. We need to see if our equipment is still performing the way it needs to be. And then we refresh the strategic plan itself. This will help us identify, moving forward, better lifecycle estimates. And then, we're going to manage the maintenance of this through our water comprehensive plan. Our water comprehensive plan guides our capital improvement plan. So this strategic plan will now be referenced within our water comprehensive plan. That picture there is our actual MTU at our maintenance center. So what will the impact be to our constituents? So it is planned to have no negative impact. Like I said, we're going to have side-by-side communications running. Also, our SCADA system is fairly unique to, like, a water treatment plant. We do not rely on computer control. We are almost all mechanical control. There is a little bit of control within SCADA, but at least 90% of our system will run manually. Also, for our wastewater stations, we have redundant mechanical equipment that will run our lift stations also. So the day-to-day, excuse me, the day-to-day user will not notice any change or improvement. We will have the enhanced council goal of dependable infrastructure, we'll have increased reliability in SCADA communications by removing overhead phone lines, you know, less culpability to weather, and more robust evaluation tools to do the projects, similar to what I referred to, West of Market. We'll be able to do more data, we'll be able to do more in-house data. Currently, we have to call our consultant to come download that, to process it into spreadsheets that we can use. All of this will become in-house with our new software. The picture to the right is actually the freshly cleaned and scraped wet well at the plaza lift station. So that's the dirty side of the station. So any of you who've ever been to the clean side and seen the pumps, this is where the pumps get the effluent. That is my presentation.
Thank you, Tom. That was great. We enjoyed the visuals and the personal story. So, well done.
Thank you.
Well done. I know you were eating this up. I and I, and she lights up.
Well, Anna, if I could make a comment. I think the part that gets tricky for me is when we're talking about SCADA is the fact that we're talking about two completely separate systems, right? Water and wastewater. And just the management of that, I find, I mean, you have to have so many sort of redundancies and so many things twice that, yeah.
And in the past, they were, they were ran separately, quite honestly, and this was another driver for the SCADA master plan, is to have consistency from one utility to the other. Because realistically, the components and the programming are very similar, their operations are different, but you can still troubleshoot both of them the same ways.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Pascal?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad that we're investing in this type of technology. Obviously, it's useful and helps us be more efficient and respond to emergencies. A question that I had was, do the tax, the rate payers in Kirkland for wastewater and water, they're paying for these improvements and the operations of the SCADA system? Because I know that we have, like, half our city is not operated by Kirkland. Water and wastewater, that's North Shore. Is that, is that how that works, then? Or are all taxpayers paying for these?
No, this is, this is fully funded out of our utility rates. So just the folks who pay utility rates in Kirkland, so not the NUD.
Okay, so those that are getting the benefit are paying towards this. How do we, how does this compare to North Shore? Do we know? How North Shore runs their water, wastewater for Totem Lake and North Kirkland?
How their SCADA is similar?
Well, do they have a similar level of investment in technology and operations that we have invested in for South Kirkland?
Actually, timely question. We're planning a visit to go see North Shore. I've never been to their operations center. I'm not exactly sure how their system works hydraulically, whether or not they, I don't even know if North Shore has its own wells. Like, I don't know what all their water sources are. I don't know the elevation that their water comes in, how much of it needs to be pumped, how much of it runs on mechanical gravity things. But we are looking into that. We're looking into it for a number of reasons. Obviously, this is going to go out to bid, and we'd like to see, you know, if we have a contractor that wins this bid that we've not worked with before, it'd be nice to know who else is working locally, because we really don't have that information. But that is one of our stops. We'd like to go out to talk to North Shore.
Great, yeah, that'd be really interesting to hear what you learn. And, I mean, I think just from kind of my policy hat is, I just want to make sure that our residents are getting the same level of service, whether they live in North Kirkland or South Kirkland. That's the bottom line.
Councilor Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that was the first of my two questions that are, it's also, the two questions are related, but was around our Kirkland residents and businesses that receive these services from North Shore Utility District. If we could learn more from them, get information for them, I'd certainly be interested personally as a council member in learning more from them, or whether that's directly from a presentation from them, whether that's council members going on a site visit, whether that's you bringing back what you learned, or a combination of those things. I'd also be interested in learning more about that for very similar reasons that Councilor Pascal articulated. Also related to that, I had a question around disaster preparedness, and you used the word redundancy, but I know that was in some other context as well, while we're transferring over from the old system to the new system. And I had questions about redundancy in North Shore Utility District as well, and just our disaster preparedness plans as a whole, if there were a disaster that were to impact water sewage, and how would we get information if we, you know, transfer everything from copper lines over to cellular? If the cellular network were disrupted, what is our plan for that? What is our, I know that it was in, I think, maybe an appendix to the report that we had. I saw it in PR.IP9, I believe, where it just references security plan controls there, but doesn't really get into a lot of specifics about what that would be. So I'd be interested in learning more about that. Again, just being prepared, not only for what we control, but for what North Shore Utility District controls as well, and just to make sure we have some sort of uniformity in our plan there and communication with them. I, you know, assume we probably have some of that already in our plans, but, and it was just referenced here, so I understand that that may be just referencing our disaster preparedness plans elsewhere, but since we're talking about it, I'm curious about what those plans are. And again, in your conversations with North Shore Utility District, just making sure we have, as Councilor Pascal mentioned, kind of a continuity of services for our entire city, and if a disaster were to happen, that we had communication with, you know, that we understood what would happen with all of our water throughout the city. Thank you.
Thumbs up from the city manager. Anyone else? All right, thank you both. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Tom's like, we're done.
Chris, thank you, Tom.
All right. Since we have finished our study session early, I would love to use this time to go to exec session, discuss litigation as authorized in RCW 4231101I2. Could I have a motion to go to exec session?
So moved?
Second.
All right. Councilor Falcone has moved. Councilor Tim Chisen has seconded that we go into executive session now. Excuse me. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We will expect to reconvene a regular meeting at 7:00 PM, at which time we will go into recess and start our regular meeting at 7:30. See you guys there. See you guys there.
in an update on the SCADA strategic plan and implementation. We will start tonight's evening with our honors and proclamations. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, members of the council. We're proclaiming April 2025 as Language Access Month in the city of Kirkland for all the reasons that are articulated in the proclamation. And here to receive the proclamation is Nora Adam, owner of Adams Interpreting Services LLC, and also the executive director of the Immigrant Women's Community Center. So, welcome Nora.
Thank you.
Oh, and friends, anyone else, please, everybody who is here to celebrate can join the mayor and the deputy mayor up front. Welcome.
Is your special spot?
Thank you, feel honored.
Welcome, everybody.
This is our team.
Yeah. Welcome.
A proclamation of the city of Kirkland proclaiming April 2025 as Language Access Month in Kirkland. Whereas, language access is a bridge to opportunity, civic participation, and equitable access to essential services for all residents. And whereas Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 protects Americans with limited English proficiency, LEP, and people who rely on sign language or read Braille with longstanding federal guidance that has helped ensure equitable access to government, services, and federally funded programs for all Americans. And whereas Kirkland is home to a diverse population with speakers of many languages. Over 13,000 people in Kirkland speak languages other than English, including Spanish, Brazilian Portuguese, Chinese, both Mandarin and Cantonese, Korean, Vietnamese, Russian, Ukrainian, Arabic, and Farsi, reflecting a rich cultural heritage that strengthens our community. And whereas individuals with limited English proficiency and people who rely on sign language or read Braille face barriers to accessing vital information, services, and opportunities. And whereas equitable language access promotes dignity, safety, inclusion, and belonging by ensuring that all can engage fully in civic life and access critical services such as healthcare, emergency response, education, and public safety. And whereas, the city recognizes that providing meaningful language access enhances transparency, fosters trust in public institutions, and supports the city's values expressed in Resolutions 5240, 5434, and 5548. And whereas Language Access Month is an opportunity to raise awareness of language equity, celebrate the work of interpreters, translators, and advocates, and reaffirm our city's commitment to linguistic inclusivity, linguistic inclusivity and equity for all, now therefore Mayor Kelly Curtis on behalf of the city council proclaims April 2025 as Language Access Month in Kirkland and encourages our community to celebrate the importance of language access, support efforts to enhance multilingual communication, and work toward a more inclusive, equitable future for everyone.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city of Kirkland. Thank you for this great award and for acknowledging Language Access Month. We appreciate it. Adams Interpreting Services wouldn't be here without our fabulous team here. They are the people who go out every day and honor community members that don't speak English, and they go out there because they believe in service. They believe that they need to make a difference in their community and that they don't just go out there to do the language access, but they're also cultural ambassadors. Whenever there's a cultural gap, they are there to fill in the cultural gap. So, I want to thank them. I want to honor them for their outstanding service. They have driven from far distance to be here tonight. I also want to take a moment to thank the city of Kirkland. I came to this state 29 years ago, and this was the first city where I resided for three years. And my first employer was in the city of Kirkland. All that I do really originated from this city, and this city remains to be our city. So, thank you, city of Kirkland. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And now, we'd like to take a moment to say thank you, city of Kirkland, in all the languages that are presented in this room today. So, I will start by saying it in Arabic. شكرًا سیری خرکلند.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Farzane Amirkia, and I'm a Farsi and Dari interpreter. خیلی ممنون که مارو دعوت کردید. تشكول.
Thank you, Farzane.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth, Cantonese interpreter. دو جلی آهان لان سی.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anne, and I'm a Vietnamese interpreter. So, xin cam bong than for Kirkland.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Yoli. I am also a multiple-language speaker, but I'm going to say in Mandarin. سی شی تا کلان سی.
Kathy Aleman, Spanish interpreter. muchas gracias la ciudad de Kirkland.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fathma. I'm Nora's daughter, and I will say it in Somali. مهت سیند سیری بیولویو.
Oh, my God.
I work for the city of Bellevue. That's where my mind is throwing off. I apologize. مهت سیند سیری خرکلند.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Carls, and I work with Nora at Immigrant Women's Community Center. And thank you, city of Kirkland, and the council, and the mayor. Thank you very much.
This is the time in our meeting where we normally hear from the public. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. We provide a total of 45 minutes for our items for the audience with no more than six speakers on a subject regardless of their position. If you would like to address council during the items over the audience period, please sign up using the online public instruction link or the posted QR code in chambers. For those participating by phone, please dial *9 to be recognized to speak. Items from
So, I'm going to start on a very light topic, not K-line, not density, not anything of importance. So, my wife and I walked through Huayta Park, and we found this billboard saying, "We're going to save money and make our city crews safer by paving over Central Island." Okay, if it saves money, I suppose it's good. Then, in the corner was a price tag, $420 something thousand. Like, okay, we're going to save money by spending half a million dollars. Great. So, then I run the number of it, like, okay, so that's probably the compensation for a park employee for about four years, give or take, being an engineer, running back of the envelope calculations. We're going to break even in about 15 years, give or take. I was not impressed with the savings. Crew safety, totally get it. So, you don't need to be an engineer. People don't work in the middle of the streets. They're safer then. So, what I ask the council to consider is pausing the current paving and consider putting ground cover instead of concrete, right? It's a greener solution, both in color and the fact that concrete is not the most eco-friendly material. If you ask around, if people do this in their backyards all the time when they don't want to maintain their yards, they find the right plant. There's durable, you know, dense, you know, very low maintenance. So, that should be a solution, and also it can be done with resources that we have in-house already, right? So, park employee can go and slowly, you know, remove the plants like they do today, but instead of paving concrete, just put some ground cover that will be self-sustainable. Neither concrete nor that is fully maintenance-free. I mean, if you have a driveway that's concrete, you know, the weeds will come through cracks, so probably will need to be pressure washed once a year or twice. Same thing probably with ground cover. You need to pick the trash that gets caught in there, but still, much low maintenance. So, please consider not paving over the city, and maybe we can also save some money.
All right. Thank you. Joe Kunsler is next. Joe? Do we have him? There he is.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi. Hi, guys. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Joe Kunsler here. I understand you did an autism resolution tonight, and so I just wanted to call and say thank you for that as someone on the autism spectrum. I know we have our differences about a certain matter we'll bring up later, but I think one of the steps towards inclusion that's really important is to acknowledge neurodivergent muff and realize that when you meet a person with autism, sadly, you only meet one person with autism. Each autistic person is different with different abilities. Autism is not necessarily a disability. In my case, with Asperger's, you know, I'm a very good researcher, but I'm not very good with social skills, and that has been problematic in my 43 years. But I don't see me as a victim. I see me as I defined my own situation in life. I don't believe in victimhood. I believe in a hand up, not a handout. I believe in continuing education or a level of learning, and that's, the Latin term is called bilibath. So, I really appreciate that. With about a minute and a half to go, though, I have to bring this up, and I'd be reckless if I didn't. I've had to become a student in not just public meetings and managing them, but also, you know, how to deal with somebody who just wants to hurl hate at their neighbors. With this certain individual, who I'm not going to name tonight, as I walk through town on errands, you know, shows up and calls you the four-letter N-word, he should realize that the first people rounded up were the severely disabled in the pursuit of a master race. And I think we can all agree that the Kirkland City Council has struggled in dealing with this individual, but you are not the four-letter N-word, nor have the communities that have excluded this individual because we've all had enough. People who serve on city council are trying to uphold the constitutions of the United States and Washington State, the best state in the Union. Okay, I admit I'm a little biased. But, you know, 30 seconds left to go, I am begging you, I am urging you to adopt the Redmond City Council rules. They work. They allow for wide and broad thoughtful discussion, and they've only been used against one individual, and that one individual has hurled hate, not just at them, not just at Bellevue, but at you, and you deserve better, certainly since you make time for autistic people. So, thank you for all you've done, and that was the conclusion of my remarks because my time has expired. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you. Mr. Haynes, I called you earlier, but I saw you came in, so go ahead and join us.
Hi, David Haynes, Juanita Beach. If there were more workers making more than the middlemen, there would be enough tax base to not have to borrow so much money. So, I'm wondering, why is the city council considering financing debt, borrowing money from the bank that's going to line the pockets of the non-working shareholder middlemen, donors of the immoral financial systems, debt service, police, state economy that gets the pocket the interest rate and probably donates, yet doesn't reinvest those financial profits back into the community through entrepreneurial loans or what have you? Instead, they line the pockets of shareholders who dump the debt onto the working-class oppressed, many forced to live paycheck to paycheck, made to pay the tax base while being denied a better choice in housing, as greedy Kirkland deregulates the rental speculators that rip off the small business and the residential renters with flawed designs in their floor plan, dilapidated inflated antiquated real estate that overwhelms the living conditions and denies you, like, a better quality of housing that justifies having a great American housing build-out? And also, like, let's say you deregulate the renter, the rental industry, but you take away the rental assistance for, like, you know, a few people who would destroy their credit and be forced into the streets of Kirkland, and it's like, I think you all paid $7,500 to help a few people not be evicted. And where's the renegotiation to regulate the rental speculators to say, hey, look, my place is flawed in its design, and it justifies having a renegotiation from the three mortgages that they inflated? And we don't have anything like that, but you have a draining of the lifeblood of the working class who have to pay more than a mortgage value for crappy housing. And you all want to, like, take away the small chump change amount of money that could help some people keep from being evicted. And I think you all should reinstate and reinvigorate a little bit of the rental assistance for a handful of, like, people in Kirkland, because I think the government did a good job in keeping it from being fraudulent despite people's efforts to try to be fraudulent. There's a few other things. I didn't have a chance to, like, write my whole speech, you know, but anyway, I just hope you all realize that it would be great to continue that fund for, like, the rental assistance, because it's not that many people that need it. But if you take a look at the deregulated rentals in Juanita Beach, it's overwhelmed by a car-centric 20th century, like, infrastructure where the dumpster pickup starts at 5:00 a.m. on Monday or Tuesday and goes six days a week through breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And it's overwhelmed certain people who are working at home, and it's, like, disrupting their productivity. And so, instead of having to pay, like, a mortgage value for one month to get out of the lease, we need a little bit of your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next?
Our next two speakers are Alex Zimmerman and Phil Allen.
Zhihai guy, I am very bad boy, so you know this for many years. Yeah. Zhihai, damn Nazi fascists, Gestapo bandit. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America, Trump supporter from beginning, a MAGA member. And I only one man in human history who have 6,000 day of trespass from Romano Empire for 5,000 years. I only one man who have 6,000 day of trespass, all from King County Council, different council. Yeah, exactly. 6,000. It's like a 20-year in jail. So, many year ago, when I come, I start talking every day. Before I spoke, not every day, but 20 years ago, I start speaking every day. I bring this slogan, "Stop Seattle Fascists With Idiotic Face." So, 20 years I spent for approve this because 6,000 day of trespass approve. So, people who live in King County Council, almost everybody, almost everybody is a degenerative idiot because it don't have sense. I don't talk about freedom of speech, law, constitution. They are degenerative idiot. Give one man 6,000 day of trespass can do in only mentally sick people, a psychopath, a degenerative idiot. That's it. Right now, this guy spoke about housing. So, last week, Trump make executive order. Every apartment, what has belonged to government, federal government, like King County Housing Authority, Seattle Housing Authority, Renton Housing, I know, all these people for 40 years, supposed to be belong only to citizen. You understand? One fixes problem with low-income housing for 40 years, you cannot do in this because you all without exception. And I talking about only homeless. I talking like people like me, low-income, disabled senior citizen, never fixes this problem. Why? Because too many people who rent housing, don't have citizenship, have green card, and don't have nothing documented. There's a problem what is we have. So, I right now speak to you, local government. You need cleanse the situation and make America good like before. Viva Trump! Viva new American Revolution! Stand up! Stop in acting like a freaking degenerative idiot. Viva Trump! Thank you very much.
All right, Phil, bring us home.
Am I audible?
You are.
All right. And did you receive a printout of my... All right. So, I will take you through it. Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Thank you for having me here today. I am here because I did a little survey of the benches in Taylor Fields, actually back in November, but we're going to have to go back a whole year to the beginning of the story. So, last March, Deputy Director Christopher Stubbs of the, thank you, Solid Waste Division, King County Solid Waste Division, came to a meeting of the South Rose Hills Bridal Trails Neighborhood Association and said, hey, we're going to build some benches. We're going to put in some dog waste stands, and we're going to actually start taking trashes out of Taylor Fields. This would be a few hundred yards from where that meeting occurs, and I actually remember Councilmember Sweet being present and saying, yeah, we just removed a whole lot of trash, I want to say 600 or 800 pounds, some really significant number. Sounds like a great idea. So, they went and they installed them. Now, we're going to have to fast-forward about six months. It's more like seven. The people in my neighborhood received a letter that says, hey, we're making all these changes in Taylor Fields. I actually talked about it the last time I was here, but we're going to move on. In the background, somebody said, didn't all those benches break? And when I talked with Deputy Division Director Stubbs that Friday, I said, how about I take a walk around? This is a complaint my neighbors have had. Let's see what it is. So, I went and I walked all through Taylor Fields that afternoon, and I found four benches. The first one looks great, so if you go through your packets, right there, it looks great. The second one, fallen over, and what it looks like their construction was, they dug a hole, they put in something like a, I want to say, a Styrofoam pail, they filled it with some dirt, or they stuck in the bench, they filled it with dirt, and they set it up, and it seemed pretty nice, but I bet you it rained or it settled. And either way, that bench fell over. A second one fell over and got graffitied, I think after the fact, by quite a bit. And a third one, they had wrapped in caution tape, and I could actually shake it with my hand. I point all this out, I get an email that says, oh, yeah, we're going to fix that in December. It's a little bit more back and forth. Come to a point a day in December, it's really dark at 6 o'clock on a Monday in December. So, I don't have pictures, but they had kind of propped up too and still had the wiggly one. And the third, and when we get to that Friday, they'd actually fixed it. They actually poured some concrete, gotten it right this time, and we actually have benches that stand up. But I would like to point out, King County Solid Waste Division chose the project, they chose the specific locations, they chose the design, they figured out how it was going to get constructed and who was going to construct it, and they still had a 75% failure rate in the same year, and it took them two attempts to fix it. So, I know that they want to build some other things in that area, and I think we need to be very cautious. If this is an example of their best work, what will be the next set of failures that occur? And benches didn't cause any harm, what would be the harm of the next thing? Thank you very much.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have anybody else?
There is no one else signed up.
All right. I am now closing items from the audience. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We are now moving to consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Arnold to present the audit of accounts and to highlight the two proclamations on consent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $5,934,259.3, and bills in the amount of $8,694,137.72. Tonight, the mayor on behalf of council proclaims April as Autism and Other Neurodivergence Acceptance and Appreciation Month in Kirkland in order to promote understanding, acceptance, appreciation, pride, and support for the neurodivergent community. The city aims to emphasize the importance of celebrating the unique talent, skills, and contributions of neurodivergent people while also recognizing the barriers and lack of sufficient accommodations that exist in society. Tonight, the mayor also proclaims on behalf of council April as National Arab-American Month in Kirkland. The contribution of Arab-Americans are woven into the story of our community through traditions, entrepreneurship, community activism, literature, art, and music. The city celebrates Arab-American Heritage Month by reaffirming our commitment to honoring diversity, promoting unity, and ensuring that the Arab community is recognized for contributions to our shared history and future prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Sweet, seconded by Councilmember Falcone. Are there any questions, corrections, comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, the question is on the motion to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar is approved 7-0. All right. Thank you, everyone, again for joining us. We are now moving to our very first business item, which is the briefing on the 2527 Planning Work Program. City manager?
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. Deputy members of council, so we want to give you a briefing on the planning work program. We also have, as our special guest, the Chair of the Planning Commission, Rodney Rutherford, and the Vice Chair, Bria Heiser. And so, we just made a quick decision to have them sit at the table so they don't have to stand next to the podium throughout this presentation. So, here to give you the first presentation and share it with the two members of the commission is our Deputy Director, Allison Zeig.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members, and thank you for the introduction, city manager. Thank you to the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for joining me tonight. We told them, please, please come with us so you can talk to council, and I can't promise you what time it's going to be or how long it's going to last, so we appreciate them being here. I'm going to briefly just go over some of the tasks on the draft recommended planning work program, and there's a few tasks that I want to maybe provide a little bit more background on, and then we'll be available for questions. And then Chair Rutherford and Vice Chair Heiser are here to talk a little bit more about the Planning Commission discussion around the work program. So, as you all know, the work program directs primarily the long-range planning teams' work for a three-year period, and we update it annually. Most of the projects on the planning work program work through Planning Commission and ultimately city council for code amendments or policy updates. There are a limited number of tasks that are more administrative in nature and might not go through a formal planning commissioner council review. So, there's several items on this draft 25 to 27 work program that are continuing work that's already been started under the previous work program, and those are listed here. And so, the tasks listed in this kind of bucket are all tasks that we're actively working on at the moment. This is a lot of state legislation implementation and also finishing up projects like the Houghton Park and Ride Rezone, that's coming to council for adoption soon, the Houghton Village Development Plan. That's coming to council for adoption soon, the Houghton Village Development Plan, and other more administrative projects. One being, for example, our implementation of State Bill, or Senate Bill Fifty-Two-Ninety, which governs permit review timelines. As part of that, though it's not required by the state legislation, we are actually implementing and plan to publish a public permit review dashboard so that the public can have access to how we're doing on permit review timelines. The next bucket I want to go over, and I'm happy to provide more information about any of these specific projects or tasks, are new projects that are on the Draft Twenty-Five to Twenty-Seven Planning Work Program. And these are new projects that are specifically designed to implement state legislation. A few of them, we know what they are. So for the unit lot subdivision law, the co-living bill, those are both due for implementation this year along with the critical area ordinance update. So that's updating our codes that govern streams, wetlands, geologically hazardous areas, and the like. And then we also have a placeholder on this draft work program for possible implementation of any legislation that gets passed this year. So next year, you'll see kind of a placeholder. If this session goes like the last sessions, we'll have a little bit of work cut out for us afterwards. We want to make sure that we save the space for it and have the resources available to respond. The next bucket of tasks on the draft work program are new projects. So these are projects that were not on the Twenty-Four to Twenty-Six Planning Work Program. I do want to take time to highlight just a few of them. And so generally, most of these have worked through and are recommendations of the Planning Commission, and they're listed in priority order from the Planning Commission. I do want to note that the first task on the list or on the draft work program is to work on activating the station area plan. That specific task description was not planning, recommended by Planning Commission. That one was specifically directed by council. We discussed it with council at your February twenty-eighth retreat. And what we ultimately were directed or took direction from you on that was to look at the possibility of implementing minimum density. But primarily, that task will be an economic development task led by the City Manager's Office. Just wanted to note that that one was discussed with council after Planning Commission made their recommendation. So the description is slightly different than they talked about. And they might want to elaborate on that as well. A couple other projects I just wanted to point out were the special housing project and the pilot projects that you see as new projects. Those are to be defined. They're really sort of like the state legislation implementation. They're sort of like, we want to make sure that we reserve a little bit of staff resourcing to be able to respond if something new comes our way, that we want to be able to look at. Like, perhaps a religious facility comes to us and wants to look at developing housing on their property. We're reserving just a little bit of resourcing and staff time to be able to be responsive to that if we get that direction from either our City Manager's Office or Planning Commission or Council as appropriate. So you'll see placeholders for things like that over the next couple of years. A couple others that I just wanted to talk about a little bit that were added since we talked to council about this last. If you remember, we kicked off this whole work program update in a joint session with Planning Commission and council a couple months ago. Since you've seen this draft work program or heard about these potential new tasks, there have been a few new ones added, including the last two items on the list, the Greater Downtown Action Plan. So that is a Planning Commission recommendation. That was a new task added by them. That specifically is intended to look at the possibility of expanding housing allowances in the station area up to, potentially, the high bookend that was studied in the Supplemental Environmental Impact Study for that project. And then also potentially looking at expanding inclusionary zoning into the Central Business District where it doesn't currently exist. The second was looking at housing adjustments in the Totem Lake Regional Center. And that would be to expand housing to be allowed where it isn't currently. So there are a few places throughout Totem Lake that housing is not allowed right now. So that task was to explore the possibility of expanding housing allowances now, or throughout the district. So those were both added by Planning Commission since you've last seen this. And then just one more that I wanted to highlight is the CBP Three Stormwater Project Support. So this is a kind of new and interesting opportunity. And I will note, this has also been added since Planning Commission has seen it. So this is really a project led by the Public Works Department, specifically the Stormwater Division. And the task on the planning work program is just to reserve our capacity to provide some support to them. This project is based on the stormwater team's interest in this specific area of the city. They gave me the name of the drainage basin, and I promised I wouldn't try to share too many details with you because I'd be out of my depth. That was a stormwater pun. They've been looking at the High Woodlands Drainage Basin because it does drain directly into Juanita Creek. So this area has been of interest to them for a while, specifically because it might be a good place to look at the potential for a regional stormwater detention facility on private property. They've received a grant from the Department of Ecology specifically to look at laying out some framework for a public-private partnership here. So the grant has been awarded. The grant comes with some timing requirements for when we have to use that grant money. And so that project does need to start sometime in the next year. They've asked us for some planning support on that, specifically to help kind of carry through our work with the neighborhoods. We just updated that neighborhood plan. We know that the neighborhood has an interest in seeing some revitalization of the Kingsgate Shopping Center, which could be a great location for something like a regional stormwater facility. So for some continuity with the community, we're gonna provide some planning support on that one. One of the last buckets on the planning work program, just carryover projects. So these were projects that we haven't necessarily started work on yet, but they were included in the Twenty-Four, Twenty-Six Planning Work Program per Planning Commission recommendations. A few of those ones with the asterisks have been sort of deprioritized, but they're still on the work program. We have not started work on them yet, but no new projects in this list. Lastly, there are a couple projects that you see pop up every year on the planning work program. Those are miscellaneous code amendments, so cleanup clarification items, and also annual comprehensive plan amendments. So those happen every year, so you'll see them on the work program every year. You typically also see community-initiated amendment requests running in a two-year cycle. So we receive applications in one year, we review them in the next. We did not receive any applications for this next two-year cycle that would happen over Twenty-Five and Twenty-Six. So you don't see it on the work program. You'll see it pop up again when we come back to you next year. And with that, I will hand it over to the Chair and the Vice Chair to talk a little bit about the Planning Commission direction.
Thank you, Allison. Welcome.
All right, thank you. So looking beyond what's required by the state, of course, one of the, I went back and watched our discussion on this from back in several weeks ago now, and to refresh my memory on what the Commission talked about. And as I was listening, I was thinking, it reminds me a lot of what I had conveyed in our meeting previously about leaning towards agility and how can the city be more responsive to the opportunities and the greatest struggles in our community. So what I see in like the prioritization that's been conveyed by the Commission is really leaning into those like, what are the opportunities immediately in front of us? What are the next ways that we can address the greatest struggles in our community? And then also being flexible to what are the new opportunities that might approach us in the future and be flexible to take advantage of those. The examples of these, expediting the Juanita Rezones, as well as one of the big topics on many of our minds are the streamlining of the permit review and exploring ways that we could do that, ways that we can become more aware of where the gaps are, or what are the opportunities that we can make the code easier for builders and for staff and for the public to determine how to apply it, bring more certainty and make it easier to move through it more with more certainty and more quickly. Also, yeah, the adjustments to the middle housing. You know, first looking at, of course, state compliance, but then what are the things that we can do to fine-tune what's allowed already without, you know, in the first stages, perhaps even without even increasing what's the capacity zone today? But what are the things that are impeding the development of what is already the capacity zone today? Let's see. And then, yeah, being open to what are opportunities might come in front of us and what are the ways that we can nurture more vibrant neighborhood centers, places where, make our neighborhoods, strengthen our neighborhoods, and provide more of what they need and create a place that builds social capital in our communities. I think that's, I'm sure that Bria has some other, yeah, yeah. So please go ahead.
That was a very good overview, Chair Rutherford. I would say what I witnessed when we went through the planning work program, we were very concerned with Eighty-Fifth and making sure we revisit that because there's no building happening. And we were very concerned with making sure permits are issued in a timely manner because we're having a lot of holdup there. And actually, school capacity was a big one as well, along with obviously like our current cars that are in, you know, that we're discussing right now. I would say specifically, I was a bit surprised to see that with Eighty-Fifth here, when we actually gave you guys our recommendation on Eighty-Fifth, I'll kind of tell you how this kind of went through from January. We said, "We want to talk about Eighty-Fifth because nothing's going on. We want to make sure that there's some movement there." And what we got back from staff, which was an interesting idea, "Let's activate that. And so let's have maybe some food trucks or some social gatherings," or that sort of thing. So we said, "No, that's not what we're quite looking for." I think we're looking to actually revisit the affordable requirements, affordability requirements there because it doesn't seem to have any developer interest. Nothing's moving. And more than the majority of the Planning Commission is very interested in that. This is why we made it our first item, but the language was changed here. What I understand from Allison is it went to you guys. And then there was, I don't know if there was some messaging loss there that we were concerned that there was no movement and activation wasn't going to work with food carts. We needed some real like studying on this and seeing what we can do differently. It went to you, and apparently it came back as another sort of requirement for building, which would be a minimum density requirement. That wouldn't be what the Planning Commission wanted to see there. They don't want more requirements. We want to look at what the requirements are and make sure they're not too many right now. So minimum density is adding on more requirements to what we already have, and we're not seeing developer interest there. So number one changed. It didn't change in importance, but it changed in verbiage. So substantively, it changed. So I would really suggest that there should be a discussion on how that happened because I was surprised to see that. Because the last time the Planning Commission discussed Eighty-Fifth, it was to say, "We need to activate that, but we need to talk about real things such as the affordability requirement that's stopping the building right now." Lots of discussion on permit review and interdiscussion between us, you know, one-on-one about how we move that along. And I think very important would be transparent information from the city on how long permits are taking. I think it's getting a bit better, but that's our number one holdup for housing right now. And adding more code on that is not going to help us get permits through faster because it's confusing to staff and planners. And it just adds time. We're going through a lot of different reviews as builders, and we can really streamline that. And then as we're looking at all of this and all of the infrastructure that we need, we talked a lot about the school capacity. So that was also really important to the Planning Commission. Those are three things that I would say are really important to us.
Allison, Chair Rutherford, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah. Building on Vice Chair Heiser's comments about the stationary plan, I think that gets to an approach that I might ask of the council. In guiding the Commission, I would encourage you to convey your expectations in terms of what is the end result? What would define success for these projects? And I would welcome, you know, sharing ideas for how we might achieve that, but also offer the flexibility to the Planning Commission, to the staff, of how we end up achieving that success. It might be through residential minimums, it might be through other means. But it's ultimately something that we have, there are many different options that we should be evaluating with their opportunities and their risks. And if we're, if I, I would like to ask you as a council to be very clear about what are the outcomes? What would define success? For, for example, the stationary plan, but for many of the other things as well, rather than being prescriptive about exactly what you expect to be done.
Okey-dokey, thank you. I'm making some quick notes here.
Yeah, yeah.
Allison, anything you want to add?
No, I don't think so at this point, but happy to answer any questions from council. And we did have a few suggested questions that were in your packet just to help us with this, the rest of the conversation and to get direction to finalize something to bring back to you for adoption.
Wonderful. Counsel, Councilman Tim Chisholm?
Thank you. First, I want to thank all of you for being here. I do appreciate people on boards and commissions taking the time to come to our meetings. On the permit wait times, I appreciate the dashboard and the ideas that would make permit wait times a little more transparent, I guess. I do agree with Commissioner Heiser. And the interest rate change and current business environment makes those permit wait times really essential to get to and to revisit and see how we can be helpful there. On Eighty-Fifth, the two things you talked about were minimum residential density as well as the inclusionary requirements. I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I think I would define success as some of the five-hundred or six-hundred unit, either apartment or condo buildings that we had originally envisioned on Eighty-Fifth. And I would personally maybe not define success as for-sale townhomes that would not really maximize those lots. And so one of the tools we talked about to possibly disincentivize townhomes was minimum residential density. And one of the possible tools to hopefully incentivize larger-scale apartment buildings or condo units would be revisiting the inclusionary requirements and the affordable requirements. I don't know which tools you will recommend to us, but I think both of those are worth revisiting. And if you as a Planning Commission decide one of those tools or both of those tools would help us achieve that vision, then I would certainly be interested in your recommendation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pascal.
Thank you, thank you both for being here. I support implementing the state requirements. That's the first priority. We want to get all that done, the sooner the better. On the Eighty-Fifth Street Station area, what I'm looking for is some sizable development activity taking place. And I would agree with Councilmember Tim Chisholm. Townhomes, I wouldn't consider sizable. Something big. I'd even like us to make sure that we have all the mechanisms there to allow for even commercial or hotels or other things that could really be, kind of change, kind of the feel and the look of that area along with large housing developments. I do like, I do like where you're going with the streamlining permit review. I can't help but wonder if that's more than just a regulatory issue and more a resource issue. And so when I look at the long list of projects here on the planning side, should we also consider maybe shifting more of those resources to the permit side so that we can be pushing out permits quicker? So that means our resources, staff resources. So could we do that upfront? Shift some of these priorities back a little bit so we can get permits moving, get housing permitted this year rather than next year? So that would be a question to staff and the Commission on whether that's something that we should be thinking about. When I look at this list, I do look at the fact that we are putting When I look at this list, I do look at the fact that we are putting a lot on our plate. That's, there's nothing wrong with that unless we don't deliver that, and/or we shortchange the process, or we put forth regulations that are going to stunt the outcomes that we're looking for. So I guess the question, and I don't know who this is to, to staff, is really, what is the probability, like if you, if you had to guess right now, are you confident that the 23 items for 2025 can be accomplished? Or are you 50% confident? Like where, how are you feeling about that?
I appreciate the question, Councilmember Pascal. So, right, the, in the near term, I think we have a lot more confidence. So if you'll, as you'll notice, we have just about every project that's on the Work Program for 2025 assigned to a project manager, and they're either currently working on it, or they know they've got to get to it. There's only a few projects that are unassigned right now, and those are actually waiting for us to backfill a, a current vacancy with Janice Swinson's retirement. And so as soon as we get that new senior planner onboard, we're doing interviews on Thursday, the rest of these projects will be assigned. I would say the only project on the 2025 potential task list that we're not sure about starting is the potential Phase 1 of the Totem Lake Southern Industrial Subarea Plan. And that one has to do a little bit with, with resources beyond just staffing, and a little bit potentially getting a consultant onboard to do that initial market analysis. So I would say that's the only one I feel uncertain about. The rest of them are, are in progress, or getting ready to be in progress. And we have pretty high certainty about hitting, I think, at pretty accurate timing that we've shown here. Things do get a little harder to predict the further, the further we get out. So if you asked me the same question about 2025...
So you're pretty confident, is what you're saying, for at least the 2025?
I feel pretty confident about 2025.
Okay. Oh, that's good, that's helpful. I just, I just don't want us to overpromise and underdeliver. That's, because it takes away opportunities down the road, right? We should be prioritizing and making sure we're feeling good about what we can accomplish. The last thing, in terms of my, my comments, on one of the items that is shown for 2027 is the short-term rental policy development, or regulatory review. That's something that continue, I've been continuing to hear about that since we adopted it in 2018 or 2019, I believe. And for me, I don't know how much of it is a planning regulation, as opposed to administrative tracking. So tracking of how many short-term rentals we have, code enforcement of those, how we can enforce our code enforcement, that's where I'm hearing from, from, from people. So I'm wondering if that's something that, I know I, I see it on the 2027 timeframe for the Planning Work Program, I'm just wondering if that could just be shifted to the Finance Department to take on, instead of planning.
Councilmember Pascal, I can respond. Sorry, I'm way back here, but good evening. That is actually a project that's in two buckets. The first bucket really is, I think, what you're talking about, which is working with the Finance and Administration Department to require the short-term rental platforms to give us better information about short-term rentals. That's one of the things that's really stymying our enforcement right now. We, you know, to really enforce on short-term rentals, we'd have to camp out for multiple days to figure out whether a short-term rental is being used in a way that's inconsistent with our code. We've talked to other cities that have adopted regulations that require the short-term rental platforms to give cities information about, for instance, how many days short-term rentals are being rented for, and whether they're in compliance with local regulations. So that will be the first phase that we'll be working on with Finance and Administration, and I think that is intended to be done sooner rather than later. The second phase would be really just looking overall at our short-term rental regulations to ascertain whether we want to make them more effective.
All right. Yeah, I, I mean personally, I think what I'm hearing is more the, the first part of what you described, being able to do that, which I think the Finance Administration Department, that's in their wheelhouse, and definitely want to see that move forward. And I'll share just kind of a interesting fact. I brought this up during our joint meeting. I think I mentioned the, the word Airbnb, and I got an email a few days later from Airbnb. And their, 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 their policy director, I was like, do you monitor every city council meeting in the nation? How do you, how did you pick up on that? He's, it's a little creepy, but he said they have AI, and they, they monitor all of that through AI, and they, they...
Now they're listening to you again.
Yeah, so, so they'll, they'll follow up with me on this one, but that was pretty impressive. But they are interested in helping on that. They, they specifically said that in terms of tracking and helping with a problem locations. They don't want to see that either. And so I know that they were very receptive to, to assisting. So, thank you.
Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wow, that is, that's fascinating, actually, thanks for sharing that, that story. Well, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and the entire Planning Commission for all of your hard work on this. I know that this is, this is a long list. This is a lot of work to just prioritize all of this, and to talk through all of this. So, and a lot of work ahead of you as well. So thank you so much, and thank you, Allison and the rest of the team on staff too, for all of your hard work on this. I agree with some of, you know, the comments I've heard, that this is a lot to do this year, and focusing on the state requirements is, you know, the way to go. We need to make sure we're legally complying, that's the smart move, so thank you for that. And, you know, I agree that 85th Stationery needs to be a priority. You asked some really good questions about that, you know, I, how we define success, similar to my colleagues, you know, is seeing the vision that we laid out, or as much of it as possible, with community benefit. So seeing, we've heard from the community through the comp plan update, that we want density around, you know, some of those areas there that are concentrated, and so we want a lot of affordable housing there, because that's what the community is looking for, that's what the community needs. And so similar to what Councilmember Tim Chisholm said, you know, having townhomes in places that are zoned for a lot higher density is something that I would not consider a success in that area, because we have limited land, limited areas to, that make sense to have that kind of density. And so really making sure that we make the most of that, and incentivize that as much as possible. I think it's important to have the conversations that you're mentioning. I don't want us to have policy in place that's stifling the growth that we need, right? We need to make sure that we are, economic, economic conditions change, we need to make sure that we have flexibility in both our requirements and in our incentives, and I know I've said that before, and that includes an inclusionary zoning. So I think that's an important piece of the conversation here, I certainly do. I want to see other things, you know, we've talked about hotels, and potentially needing that, that was mentioned tonight as well, seeing other mixed uses, community gathering spaces, parks, you know, all the things that we talked about, and the, the years that we envisioned and worked on the 85th Stationery is what I would consider a success in that area. And it's going to take time. The economy has changed since we first had those discussions around that plan, so, so I appreciate you raising that, thank you very much. I want to make sure that that's clear, what our vision is. And you're right, there are different ways to get there, there are different tools to get there. And I think that none of those things should be off the table. Those should all be things that we're discussing, and that I would like to see the Planning Commission discuss. Permit wait times, I agree, we need to understand more of the why first, to understand what the solutions are. So I'm interested in learning more about that through the work of the Planning Commission. So thank you for taking that on. You know, that's, obviously we want to make sure that we, we have zoning things we can do, we have regulatory things we can do, we have incentives that we can do. There are lots of different tools, that I want to make sure we're being creative with the tools in our toolkit, to be able to see more housing built. We need more affordable housing, but we also just supply and demand, need more housing built in our city. So thank you for raising that with, with permit wait times as well. School capacity, this is a big one. This is one that we talk about a lot with the school district in our coordinating committee meetings. This is one that, you know, the direction has changed, at least in the, the student enrollment projections in the school district over time, at least, you know, in the decade plus that I've lived here. They're going from, you know, drastically productions, you know, projections of drastically increased student enrollment, and reality of drastically increasing student enrollment, to both reality and projections of declining student enrollment in Lake Washington School District, and in Kirkland. And I know that they attribute that to several factors. Some of that is a decrease in birth rates, some of that is losing students to private schools, and to neighboring school districts. And some of it, I believe, may be in the projections. And what I would like to see us learn more about is, in our comprehensive plan, and in other cities' comprehensive plans in Lake Washington School District, there's a significant increase to plan for an accommodative affordable housing. And we know in discussions with the school district in the past, that in their calculations, there's obviously a difference between student generation rates with single-family homes and multifamily homes. And a nuance that the school district has expressed to us in discussions in the past is a further differentiation between low-income or affordable multifamily housing, and having the greater likelihood of having larger families, intergenerational families, in lower-income multifamily housing. And that's a nuance that I don't think is highlighted, or I'm not even sure included in their student enrollment projections, and that's something that I know that they've had discussions about, and that I'd like to understand more, especially with more of a focus on affordable housing, and our housing needs being so disproportionately at the lower-income spectrum, with the zero to 30 and the zero to 50. What impact is that really going to have, right? Their current projections may say that we're going to have decreasing enrollment, but if we are successful in the planning that we're doing for more affordable housing, that may in fact not be the case. It might be quite different. And I know they're having these conversations with other cities as well. So as part of that conversation, when you're talking about school capacity, I think that's a really important part of the conversation, is how like our affordable housing element of our comprehensive plan really intersects with their student enrollment projections, and really understanding how they calculate the student enrollment projections, to make sure that they match up with the reality of the work that we're doing in the city of Kirkland. So I encourage you, in those conversations, to have those, ask those questions of the school district, ask those questions of their contractors that are doing those student enrollment projections, to really understand and make sure that there's not a disconnect there, and to make sure that we're, we're being realistic with that, so that we can, if needed, you know, change the zoning of school property, so that they can have increased school capacity, and they can, they can build that if necessary on their property. So I know that's the part that we kind of have control over, you know, is obviously the zoning there, and I would love to see us take on that work. But I feel like they may be at a place now that they're not pushing for that, because they feel that there's not going to be an increase in, at least the near term, in student enrollment. But that may or may not be the case. Anyway, so I'd like to, for us to learn more about that, I think that's really important. I had a question on number 24, the Totem Lake Southern Industrial Subarea Plan, Phase 2. That's currently on the Planning Work Program for two years. That seems like a, like a kind of a long period of time. I know I've gotten some input from, from some, from some folks in the community about this as well, and I noticed that too. Is that, why do we think that's going to take so long?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're always trying to calibrate timelines with confidence. And looking at the Station Area Plan, I think we originally thought that would take a year and a half, and it took us four years. So, you know, we're thinking this work is going to involve consultants, the expansion of the study area beyond just the Parmac sites, and then out to the whole industrial sub-area, asking ourselves the weighty questions of how do we balance potential new housing capacity with how much commercial or light industrial space we want to really retain in the city? There's a pretty big questions, and we just think it's going to need some time for community engagement, for a lot of good Planning Commission and council discussions. So given what we learned about the Station Area, which we're now possibly, possibly even revisiting, it just seems like two years is a safer timeline, a year would seem really tight for the amount of work that we understand council might be wanting to see from that sub-area plan, based on the policy adopted in the comp plan.
Thank you, that's helpful. So as to make sure we have enough time, there might be a little bit of buffer, but it's okay, we'll, we'll make it, so we don't have to extend the time, right? Hopefully we'll...
Right, and I think that most of the time when we start a task, we, we can have scoping discussions, right? So are we studying everything in this task that you wanted us to study? Are we studying potential minimum density, and adjusting inclusionary requirements, for example? So we can have these conversations when we start the tasks, at which point we think we could also discuss if there's any way we might be able to do things incrementally, right? Is there something that we could adopt for the Totem Lake Subarea as a first step, and then keep studying a second or third step? So I think that opportunity is still on the table with the description of really any of the tasks.
That sounds great, thank you. The next question has on the special housing project. I, I actually think this is a great idea. I know we had talked about, I think we've had multiple conversations, including on our joint meeting that we had, study session that we had, around piloting things, right? A lot of this work takes a long time, right, as we were just talking about. And there's also a sense of urgency, that there's stuff that needs to be done, and some of these things that we want to try out, the, the different tools that are levers that we want to, we want to work with to really help incentivize housing and the housing that we need in our community, it takes a long time to study and do those things. And sometimes having a pilot, which we've all talked about, is a great tool to be able to see what works, what doesn't work, how can we tweak it, so that when we implement it citywide, or in a larger way, that we've already had those lessons learned from that. So I kind of feel like that, I know you kind of talked about it, but this is a great opportunity, this kind of special housing project, and I want to make sure that we do something with this, right? And so I know it's intended to be very general, by its nature, which is good, it's not overly prescriptive, but I want to also make sure that we don't forget about it, and just let it, the year go by, and that we don't utilize that. And so I'm wondering if there's a little bit of specificity that we can have around that, perhaps that there's a specific date on an agenda on a Planning Commission, or something that ideas are discussed, or that we ask the public, or Planning Commissioners and Councilmembers and staff, to propose ideas leading up to that meeting, so that potential ideas can be discussed, that there's some sort of general framework, so that we do in fact move forward with this. And then let the Planning Commission and council and staff, and everyone discuss and decide the best path forward, if, which idea, if there is an idea worth pursuing. But just having kind of a date, and having a general idea of, you know, I don't want us to just wait around for someone to come to us with this wonderful magic, magical idea for this project. Just want to make sure we have a mechanism, that we're asking folks for ideas, and that we have something on the calendar, that we're, we are moving forward. So I would propose whatever the appropriate way of doing that, of maybe adding some language in there around that, just so we have that, that we're sure that we're moving forward with that. I think that would be really good to, to do. Aside from that, I just want to reiterate that all of these things on here are important, and I know it's hard to prioritize which ones are the most important ones to do first, versus in the coming years. So I appreciate that, and thank you for your hard work in, in prioritizing that for us to make it easier for council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet, then Arnold, then Black.
Thanks so much, you guys, and really appreciate your kind of candid conversation around sort of how we're all interpreting, interpreting this. And leave it to Councilmember Falcone to take whatever I was thinking about before she started talking, and throw it out the window with all new concepts around how to count students, and how big, how big do schools have to be, and oh my God. So I'll just stick with a couple things. I mean, when I look at this plan, I think in general it is a plan that, that would be fun to work on. There's enough on there that we really need to get done, that will make the work of the commission and the work of the council around these issues, I think intriguing and rewarding. I worry about the capitalization of, and it's not capitalized, but I guess I would, you know, all of this discussion about the 85th Street project. I think Larry was elected in 1997, and there was discussion going on there about how to catalyze Totem Lake. And it wasn't until 2010 that we finally figured out, actually 2011, that we finally began to get some traction on that project. That worries me. And it worries me doubly so, because we recognize that there's an environment that we're facing right now, around the economy, around the national situation, that's going to make getting big, catalytic kinds of projects, it will make them a challenge. And while I agree that I think that we should look at the, what's it called?
Minimum density.
Thank you. Increased minimum density is probably something that we should move forward with, in order not to lose the valuable pieces of land that we've got that are up there. I just think we have to be prepared for a wait. And Allison, I see your name is on that list, so I don't want you to be too frustrated, because your name's been on that list for an awfully long time. So if that doesn't happen, I think there are plenty of things for us to work on. But until we figure out, and we'll, we'll be helped by hiring our Economic Development Manager, and really getting some work, understanding what it is that that community wants, and that's going to, that's going to give us a whole lot of information. But, you know, businesses have already walked away from projects, and are continuing to do so all over the country. So, that being said, I think it's important to follow the government-required stuff, and I do see more coming out this year, including... And I do see more coming out this year, including permits streamlining. And I think the issues around, we can't leave the fact that we, I think we did this fabulous job with the 85th Street project with the work that we've done already. And so I think we have this kind of boilerplate that includes requirements for open spaces, for public amenities, for co-mingling of workers and people in residences, the whole, I think it's a beautiful plan. I don't want to mess with it a whole lot. I think we should move forward with any of the projects we can. We built Totem Lake. Maybe that was a bit catalytic around what happened at Totem Lake. But we do have a huge opportunity at the 85th Street project with the lake there and opening up of that property. So I'm sorry, I'm getting kind of off of topic. It's all Amy's fault. So I think there's a lot for us to do, but I think, actually Rodney, you said it in your first couple sentences, this is a plan and this is a time that will require us all to be incredibly nimble. We may be disappointed sometimes, but we've got plenty of projects to sort of pick up the pace and keep us moving. So let us be so. I hope, Bria, you are clearer on our intention around, and particularly given Amy's discussion around the intentionality of building affordability. If density, if 85th Street is the only place where we have the ability to put real density at this point, then we have to take advantage of this opportunity to find a way to build affordability. So whether it's, you know, partnerships, whatever we come up with, that's the kind of housing we have to build. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you Commissioner Rutherford and Commissioner Heiser for being here tonight. We appreciate the extra meeting on top of the workload of the commission and you and your leadership roles. First, on 85th, I agree with Councilmember Sweet. I'm not interested in opening up the station area plan. We've made a bargain where we've increased density and created developer value and we're requiring some public benefit for that value created, including some inclusionary zoning. Because we're still in the primary, we're still in the pioneer provision that enables flexibility and doesn't put in the new requirements, that's not the reason why the station area hasn't developed yet. There's other macroeconomic issues. So I'm not interested in looking at the affordable housing, although I do agree with my colleagues that we need to look at a minimum density requirement to prevent the townhome issue from happening compared to our vision for high-rise dense apartments. And the comment from Councilmember Falcone on enabling hotel use, if that's not already allowed, because that's something that has come up as part of our crack in discussions. I think that covers, actually one more thing before that covers 2025. On the permitting streamlining, really interested in the permit dashboard and want the opportunity to review the information we'd get out of that. I think that'll help guide the decisions of the things we've heard on whether we need more staffing or other things that we need to change in our codes to go things along. But I want that to be data based. So I think you're on the right track for what happens in 2025. In 2026 and 2027, for school capacity, I agree it's an important issue, but as we've heard from Councilmember Falcone and as we've heard from our coordinating committee, Lake Washington School District doesn't need a change right now. And in fact, for the stuff they're building right now, it's not even to the current capacity, much less giving them more capacity. You look at Kirkland Middle School, it's still a single story or a two-story structure and they could have built taller and haven't. So if, when I look at 2026, I'm more interested in things like neighborhood cafes and other things there than school capacity unless we hear differently from the school district. For the Totem Lake Industrial Subarea, I'm not interested in having a big station area plan study with an either or of saying how much industrial lands do we need or housing? I think the interest on this that Councilmember Pascal mentioned during our comp plan discussion is how do we do both? How do we preserve the industrial lands and allow housing on there? So I look forward to a scoping decision on that to potentially narrow that and not have it be the two-year project that's there. That could happen in 2026. And I hope we have the chance to talk about 2026 earlier than April of 2026. But I think you're on the right track. I think you've got the right priorities. I think there are a number of things from the TDLs on this and the details on the pilots that we can get to when we see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Want to add my thank you to the others, my colleagues on the council. Just thank you so much for the hard work. Thank you for taking on such an ambitious work program. That's to the commissioners and also to staff. So just big thank you and thank you for being here tonight and having this conversation. It's a unique opportunity for us to have another back and forth conversation. So I think it's really valuable and I did want to add my remarks to what have been a really great set of remarks from my colleagues. So I appreciate everyone's input and it's been a fascinating conversation. Generally, coming into this conversation, what I was thinking was, wow, this is a really ambitious work program. And so my overarching message, guidance to the planning commission and staff is, was going to be to stay focused as much as we can on the good work that we've already begun and really try to deliver on the hard work that has come before us. And that includes, of course, the 85th, the stationary plan. But a lot of the hard work and good work that went into the comp plan, there's a lot of good things in there and I'd like to see us focus on delivering on the promise that exists in the work that we already done. So that was sort of one overarching message. Yes, focusing on state law compliance, I'll just add my voice to that. I don't want to under emphasize the importance of the economic development activation work that the city manager's office is planning to leave. I really see that as a really important aspect of us looking at the station area. So I bring that up to say, there's an important aspect of this is not about development rights, alterations and zoning changes. So that's what we, we don't need to rehash that conversation because we've had that conversation around the station area plan just recently. But I just want to emphasize that I see that as a really integral element of this work is the economic development activation analysis. Love the idea of the permit dashboard. I won't reiterate what Deputy Mayor Arnold said about it. I agree with him and I'm excited to see the results of that. Despite the fact that I just said that this is an ambitious work program, I can actually think of one item that I didn't see on here that I'm going to ask a question maybe Allison about, and it has to do with faith-based properties. Before I get to that, Chair Rutherford, you asked a really legitimate question, which is give us guidance when it comes to that priority item of the station area, give us guidance on what your, what your definition of success is. I think somebody, it might have been Councilmember Sweet, sort of said it's everything that we talked about when we developed that stationary plan. But for me, again, just sort of reiterating, it's that greater mix of housing types with a real attention to the workforce housing. So where more of our employees who are employees of our small businesses, our nurses, our teachers, these are folks who are essential to our community, having the greater mix of different housing and sufficient number of housing in that space to actually let people who are teachers, are nurses and are working in our small businesses have the choice to live in Kirkland. Plus, the important community benefits. I just remind everyone, we put a one-year pause on the station area in order to specifically make sure and analyze the community benefits aspects of the work that we are doing. So that community benefits, delivering on those community benefits, they've been, things have been mentioned. It included schools, it included parks, it included open spaces and third spaces and more, greater mobility with different modes of transportation, all of that, so delivering on that too. So that's, it's already been talked about. Councilmember Tim Chisen brought up that the minimum density is a possible tool for that. I want to have that conversation. It's important to me that we do. And Deputy Mayor Arnold brought up, you know, the pioneer provision, that we're already in the pioneer, we're still in the pioneer provision stage of any inclusionary zoning. But we should be talking about inclusionary zoning, but I, but the fact that we're in the pioneer provision stage has to be part of any conversation we might have about that. Really, at the end of the day, what I want to focus on is delivering on the promise that's already in the station area, planning decisions. I did mention that one additional item, Allison, and I don't see it in here, and I'm not that excited about adding something to the work program, but what about faith-based housing on faith-based properties? What has, what has been the discussion around that? I mean, I know we as a council have had a discussion about that. What has been the discussion among the commissioners and the staff? Is there a work program item or is that not needed?
I'll start briefly and then I think Chair Rutherford might have something to add. So that is when we have been talking about what could a pilot project be, what could a housing special project be? That's the one that keeps coming to mind for me. There hasn't been a planning commission vote on what that project would be, so there hasn't been a formal discussion. But that certainly in my mind is sort of a frontrunner to how we might devote some time to look at something innovative or different.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was thinking as well. And I like the earlier point about thinking proactively about how we can inspire the community to bring forth proposals. How can we get it to be more broadly known that this is something that we are interested in seeking, learning about what opportunities might exist in our community, reaching out to some of the owners of larger and or significantly underutilized sites in places that are valuable to our, or could become more valuable to our neighborhoods. So I think there's a lot of, I'd love to nerd through that further and explore how can we inspire people to come forth with their ideas?
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we don't need a number 24 for 2025 on the work program because the staff and the commissioners have this in their mind that they're, this idea. Okay. Thank you very much for addressing that.
I'm going to take my turn because my number one was the faith-based properties. And we actually have had a number of conversations with organizations, congregations that want to explore this. So it's not waiting for someone. They've already knocked on our door and said, we want to explore this. So I think it needs to be added and I think we need to lead on this project. We did have a good in-depth conversation with Bellevue's Housing Department about their C1 zoning and we learned a lot. And I think that we can take advantage of what they've done and move forward. I think that I can give you names of three faith-based congregations that have met with me that said they want to do this. So I think that we, this is going to be my amendment, that we need to add this. And maybe it is the special project area, but I think that this is a real opportunity. We did discuss it during the comp plan. So I'm strongly advocating that this is something that we need to add rather than wait. Because when these congregations that are land-rich and membership-poor, when they are ready to go, we want to be ready to meet them. We don't want to go, all right, well, let's spend three years to figure this out. I want to be ready to help them do what they want to do. And many of the congregations that have met with me is saying, this is our mission. Building affordable housing and caring for our community is our mission. So that would be my amendment to add to the work program. I do, I jumped in without my thank you, but you guys have heard our thank you. And I recognize that you just went through the comp plan and all that work and now you've done a lot of work on this work program. I think it's ambitious. I really appreciate what you said, Chair Rutherford, about being agile and nimble. I think that that's what we're all feeling is let's start moving forward on these. So I want to add that and maybe it fits in the special project bucket. I'm not going to say when you need to add it, Allison, but I'd say sooner rather than later because I think there's an urgency around it. I also want to echo what you've heard on the station area plan. I'm supportive of looking at the minimum density, but anything that we do with the station area plan, I think should be very surgical. And we do have our number one task on our council work program is catalyzing the station area plan. So I strongly believe that that will be the city council's emphasis next year, that when we hire the economic development manager, we will learn so much more and we will figure out how to make this happen. But because we do have the pioneer provision that hasn't even been opened up or explored yet, we still have that opportunity as far as inclusionary zoning. The only other things that I want to add is I'm not clear, because I agree with everything that's been said. I agree that can we do the Totem Lake into one piece and make the time links shorter? So I know that comes with you guys figuring out what that initiative entails. I'm not clear what the pilot parking project is. And we haven't talked about that yet. We've done a parking study. We have some data on what we know our turnover is. So can you tell me a little bit about what the pilot parking project is?
I can start and then I might also phone my friend in the back corner there. So this sort of evolved at the same time that we were talking about housing pilot projects. A lot of interest in maybe amending development standards. Parking, we keep hearing is one of the barriers to redevelopment, but changing parking policy citywide is a pretty big task, even though we do have it on the work program for a start in 2027. And that aligns more with when public works, things they could work on that with us.
Okay. That's good to know.
A parking pilot project might be, hey, should we, should we try a parking change in a more limited geographic area that might be able to absorb a change, like lowering parking minimums?
So for example, it wouldn't be project-specific, it would perhaps be zone-specific.
Honestly, I think it could be either at this point. It's intentionally.
Vague.
Vague in the work program again, so that we could be responsive to how the conversation around parking might evolve. We're working on a couple of projects right now and this happens a lot with the planning commission. We're working on one project and we start discussing an idea that we might want to poke at in another kind of project. Right now, looking at the Wanita rezones is spurring some really interesting conversations about parking on the planning commission. We might have an idea that comes out of those conversations that sort of lends itself to, hey, should, maybe, maybe those projects aren't ready for it, but maybe there's another place or another time that something could happen on parking.
Okay. Okay. Let me just check my notes real quick. Faith-based, station area, Totem Lake, parking project. And I'm just going to express my disappointment that Housing Strategy Plan is pushed out yet further and you guys know how much I want that to be 26.
I'll speak to that just very briefly because, you know.
Yes.
We were both on the Housing Strategy Advisory Group several years ago and I also have a big passion for that. I feel like at this point, you know, back to the notion of agility, I feel like there's, and I think many, rather, many of those on the commission also see that there's still a lot of opportunities for the refinement and implementation of many of the concepts that were identified in the existing station, the existing Housing Strategy Action Plan. And that there's a lot of opportunity still there that we need to like dig into and push forward. And that, we see that as a higher priority at this point, a more urgent priority than taking a step back at the broader vision. We will get to that point, I believe as well. It'll be important, but I think there's still a lot that we can do. There's a lot of meat available for us and the things that are already in our existing strategy plan. And we don't have to be real formal about incorporating new ideas as well. We aren't going to let that hold us back. So hopefully that addresses.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Do you have enough?
I believe so. So our next step will be trying to incorporate some of the feedback and then bringing it back to you to consider adoption.
Deputy Manager.
Mayor, can I just ask Adam to just say a few words on the permit?
Oh, sure.
Process? Because I think what you're hearing is, we heard from the majority of the council, that's something that's very interesting. You've only sort of heard about the dashboard, but there is more that we're looking at then on permit than just the dashboard, so.
Please, go ahead.
Thanks, Deputy Manager. Thanks, Mayor. And yeah, I know we take up.
And yeah, I know we take up more than our share of time for planning items, so thanks for the minute or two extra. I guess I just wanted to make three points about permit streamlining. It is something that we're really laser-focused on. The first point I want to make is that, as a number of you have mentioned, including the deputy mayor, we're really looking forward to the permit dashboard, right? That will help us ascertain, you know, resource needs, snags in the system that will help us, I think, improve permit processing in the long run. I think the preliminary analysis that we've done have, over the last year, has shown that we are generally meeting targets for most of our permits. That doesn't mean that individual developers are having, not having different experiences, right? There's a range of experiences that, of people who are, who are moving permits through the system, but generally, on average, we are, we are meeting targets, I would say. The second point I want to make is that there are a number of projects on the work plan that relate very directly to permit streamlining. So just an example, we're reforming the design review process, right, and streamlining that quite a bit. The miscellaneous code amendments and CIPA exemptions are also going to achieve permit streamlining as well. We talked about the permit dashboard. The thing I want to emphasize about that is that the permit dashboard is not something that is required by state legislation, that's something that we are implementing in Kirkland that is, goes above and beyond what the state requirements are to help respond to some of the concerns that we've heard about permit streamlining. And then the Critical Areas Code as well, that's a big one, you'll see it when, when it comes to you, but that is a massive code. I want to say it's probably, you know, 100 pages long or something like that. To the extent that we can simplify that, to the extent that we can simplify Chapter 85 as well, which is our GeoHazard review section of the code, that will go a long way towards streamlining as well. And that's easier said than done, I would say. The third point and the last point I want to make is in response to Councilmember Pascal's comments about resourcing. I guess the one thing I want to say about that is that I think, I can say that I think I've never felt constrained from a resource perspective for staffing on the permit review side. Council and the City Manager's Office have always been very, very generous in allowing us to over-hire staff, dedicate staff to public projects, dedicate staff to private projects. So I, it's not to say that, you know, we couldn't use more staff or won't need more staff in the future, but I think that the real challenge right now is making the code easier to implement. If you print out the entire zoning code and stack it up, it's about, I don't know if you can see, but it's about a foot and a half high, and that's not really conducive to streamline work from anybody, whether it's staff or applicants. And I think we're seeing the effects of that over time. The code never gets shorter, it always gets longer, so to the extent that we can focus on some of these code amendment projects and really make the code more navigable and more simple, I think we'll go a lot farther than, than just adding on staff right now, even though that's something that we definitely want to, want to look at in the future and, and always be open to.
Thank you, Adam. Councilmember Falcone has the last comment.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you for that context, Adam, that's really helpful, and I appreciate the staff going above and beyond and the extra transparency with the permit dashboard, too. I think that'll be useful for everybody in the community and at the city, so thank you for that. I first want to say that I just lend my, throw my support behind the idea of adding the faith-based property consideration. I'm optimistic that it's not a huge lift, given that we have some examples of Bellevue and perhaps other cities and, and how they've implemented that, that, that we can look to, as, as Mayor Curtis mentioned, so hopefully that will be helpful. And then one small comment I forgot to make is on item number 25. It's the Home Occupation Allowance, and it says the scope of this project could be expanded to explore potential code amendments to increase flexibility for neighborhood-scale commercial uses in primarily residential zones. I would propose to change that to the scope of this project will explore potential code amendments. I think this is something that was, you know, highlighted in our comprehensive plan, is something that's really important to our goals of equity and sustainability and of affordable communities and not just affordable housing. And so I would like to see that changed, because I want to make sure that that does not get removed, just because it said it could be. I would like to see that language changed, to say that it will include that evaluation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both for being here. That was a long conversation, but I think it was worthwhile. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go through item 9B, which is the 2025-26 City Work Program adoption, because I think it's going to go relatively quickly, and then we'll take a break. So, City Manager.
Thank you. I need Thero.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. So we're here to talk about approving Resolution 5676, which would be adopting the city work program. Just brief reminder of the timeline here, we first started discussing this January, where we did the draft work program. The council had a chance to look at this in February and March 18th, and so we're here before you with a final proposed work program of 12 initiatives. It's available for your adoption tonight, or if the council has additional changes or actions, we can bring it back on April 15th. But the intent is to adopt it tonight, so. What I'm going to do is just go quickly through the 12, and then I'll just finish at the end and see if council has any final questions. So a reminder, we have catalyzing the station area. We have implementing the 2044 transportation and comprehensive plans through the planning work program, like the conversation just had, as well as the transportation work program, which is going to come to you from the Planning Commission. We have completing all of the promises made in Proposition 1, Fire Proposition 1, and then also completing the fire training props, which would be behind Fire Station 24 in Juanita. We have partnering with the Seattle Kraken if they continue to meet the commitments of community benefits defined by the council. And as I said to the council before, we did receive a proposal from the Kraken on Friday by the deadline, so we actually have a fairly thorough response from the Kraken. The city staff, the Kraken team is looking at this, while coming back to the council in the future, I think April 15th, we have a check-in with the council on what we received from the Kraken, but it looks to be pretty thorough and responsive. We have completed a phased review of the criminal justice system, including particularly looking at prosecution and defense. We have adopting and implementing the homelessness action plan and ensuring that the purpose of a housing site in Kirkland complies with the partnership agreement that we reached with King County several years ago. We have completing the construction of the three major arterials, Juanita Drive, 100th Avenue Northeast, and 124th Avenue Northeast. We have enhancing community outreach and engagement to further improve communication. This is the item next on the agenda after the break. We'll talk a little bit about that. There's sort of two parts to this. One part is less formal, sort of small-ball community conversations with the council, and the other is we want to talk to you about the possibility of community forums like we did with homelessness and, and town halls. So that's going to be the next presentation. Updating the DIB roadmap with the community council and city staff. This was the last discussion we had, these last three from last meeting. Explore options and financing strategies for the Peter Kirk Pool to enable year-round operations. The council agreed to put back on the list, renovate and expand the public work maintenance center. The whole conversation you had about SCADA, I think, was sort of helpful, it's like we need to make sure this infrastructure works, and that the staff have a great place to be, that there's sufficient place for our staff and our vehicles. And then finally, to develop an equitable, sustainable 27-28 budget with a particular focus on sustainability for streets, for human services, and for parks' operation and maintenance. So. Goal tonight is to review and approve Resolution 5676, which adopts all those things I just showed you in that order, although the order is not to indicate priority. And then, should you do that, we would then come back to you with each of these elements, with the work program items, sequencing timelines and so forth. So that is my final slide. Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel. Councilmember Sweet.
I would like to move. Thank you. You're a good mayor. I would like to move the adoption of the 2025-26 City Work Program.
Second, moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Falcone to approve Resolution 5676. Any discussion?
To my motion?
Yes.
I don't think we have any words left. I think. Just saying.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved 7-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right, folks, we're going to take a quick break, and we will be back at 9:20.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're waiting for Jim.
All right. We are slowly back. Our item. Our next item is 9C, a briefing on the expanded city council community engagement plan. City manager.
All right, I'm going to speak very slowly. So David, David Walbrecht, who was going to give this presentation, is very sick today.
Oh, no.
And so Jim Lopez is going to be filling in and giving his presentation.
He's running in.
He was just watching the Boston Bruins hockey game and he's now back.
I like to make an entrance.
Yes. So to give you this overview on David's behalf is our deputy city manager of external affairs, Jim Lopez.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. David did some great work on this and a lot of the details are in the memorandum we provided along with this presentation. So I thought I would jump right in to talk about, this is building on our conversation at the retreat and a lot of feedback that council has given us to expand and be creative around community engagement. And really, the kind of underlying theme is opportunity to connect, have conversations, different. There are different structures that we talked about, both informal and formal. They're very different. They have very. They have different demands on staff resources, which I'm going to talk about, but there is a common theme, which is connection for the council and the community. So tonight, I'm going to go over the informal ideas. The informal ideas mostly be here to answer questions about how staff might do it, what are the demands, what are the timelines we might need in order to stand up these ideas, and then get other direction from council as needed. So it's more in the spirit of the events, it's much more of a give and take between the council and me and the city manager. So the informal events, we've kind of structured more frequently, perhaps one per month. These are, you know, creative opportunities, one-on-ones, maybe small group meetings at coffee shops or in the park or at the library. We could, as the staff, work with you to create hours where the community came to understand you would be available at these different locations for, you know, just conversations about whatever folks want to talk about. We've had very successful coffee with the COP program and it's very similar in that nature. And the council, you're already very available to do this anyway, but the staff would kind of structure these at various locations throughout the city. So we could be creative about that, meeting the community where they are. This is not that much of a heavy lift for city manager staff. Like, we do this, we currently will draft up briefing papers and talking points and we have the amazing Amy Boland to help with scheduling. So we would work with our local environments to build locations for you, but I think this is reasonably doable on our current work program. So let me stop there, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to note, I love this picture. And Councilwoman Black is wearing some serious Sorrels in 50-degree weather. It was muddy. Was it muddy? So we need to do more of that. We need to dress up in costume more. All right, Councilwoman Falcone.
This is a great picture.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have to say, thank you so much, Deputy City Manager Lopez. I love this. I'm a huge cheerleader and supporter of having these informal events. So you said you wanted to pause here, so I assume you want our feedback here.
Yes, please.
For the informal events. Yes, please. I think that this is a great way for us to connect with the community. We've heard from community members looking for more two-way dialogue with their council members. I think having a really approachable, informal format is a really great approach here. And I love the idea of meeting folks in the community where they are, at locations and hours and days that work for folks. I think we'll need to balance the interest of both consistency and predictability, but also accommodating different schedules. So maybe it's, I don't know, every other month, it's like a weekend or a weekday or evening or week, whatever that we determine is the best fit for the community. But I do want to make sure we're accommodating just different types of schedules, but also having some consistency and predictability. So love it, thank you, and I'm really excited for this.
Councilwoman Black.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I like the way we approach this because I was going to suggest that we sort of divide the questions on this whole topic a little bit. And you've already done that for us. And this is where I think, this is the, I don't need to say a whole lot, just I'm supportive of this, this is, I think, the low-hanging fruit, this is the less staff-intensive thing that we can start really implementing now. And I really like the idea of the informality of it. It's like office hours with the council, you know, at these different locations on the community. I don't need to repeat everything Councilwoman Falcone just said. Just throwing my weight behind this as, this, I feel like, I'm going to have more comments on the second part of the question later. This is the part that I feel like we're ready to start looking at implementing. I have thoughts on the other ideas that we'll talk about later. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Really excited to go do this and I think you've got the right plan there. On the number of council members, I think three council members is the right to attend each event. You know, as we rotate through, that's adding, setting the expectations on ourselves that we're doing one a quarter. I think that's appropriate. And I think that this also would have a chance for us to have some good interaction, but not add a bunch of work. So definitely would want to have this be limited versus notice it to say that all seven of us are at all these every month.
So Deputy Mayor Arnold, this could very well be one a quarter. I think our original ask was, do you want us to do it one a month?
No, I'm saying with the seven of us, three at a time, it ends up being, you know, about once a quarter. Happy to be able to go do the coffee or the walk in the park, policy in the park, to add that for three hours once a quarter. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just also want to throw my support and three is right. I know in the memo it was, well, how do we divide it up? Do we do it by seats? I would randomize it so that it's not, we're not always the same people together, that there's different groupings at different times. But yeah, I think this will be really fun and I probably have 10 council, 10 constituent coffees this week and this will be, come to this, then we can chat. So, yeah.
That's a really great point. It will be a way of being efficient with your time.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So that's the kind of.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. I want to interject. I think I had five or 10 coffees with people ahead of board and commission recruitments. And I think that's a good time to do group coffees so that, I'm not talking about my experience on a board or commission with seven to 10 individual people. And so right before a board or commission recruitment season, I think would be a great time to do coffees or informational session or whatever, to just give group more in a organized fashion. Thank you.
I support that. Okay.
So thank you. We go from the more or less ready to put into play, or at least bring you a recommendation to get going on this, to the formal events. Now, the formal events, as we discussed in the retreat and rewrote in the memo, this is more reflective of a bigger community endeavor where, like we did the town hall, for those of you remember or here when we did the gun safety at the Lake Washington High School, that was a, the scope could be that big. Another great example of a formal event is what we recently did with the homelessness forums. We did two homelessness forums. And in the council interaction in each of those events was different, but it was both illustrative of the conversation we could have about what role you might want to play at these events. In the memorandum, we kind of bifurcated them to tabling, like the homeless event, where we're, where the council is having conversations throughout the night to a kind of bigger town hall format where you may be walking around the stage with a microphone, being responsive to several issues. In each of these events, however, it is a reasonably significant staff endeavor. Like, for example, the formal event for the homelessness forum, we have, and thank you so much, an FTE devoted to that work. And there are a couple other projects on her plate, but she's doing a wonderful job and did a bucket load of work putting that together. We had the communication manager, myself, we hired a facilitator, and we had the expertise of the human services staff. And then we had to recruit volunteers to come to the table. So just as a background, that was, you know, a wonderful, I thought it was a wonderful event, but it does have a lift to it. So we would have to think through how we would structure city manager resources and maybe whether we would need more resources in order to do it. So here in the memorandum, these are the two pictures of the two events that I talked about. On the top, it would be, that was a kind of traditional town hall, the council at the end of the night got a chance to speak after listening throughout the evening. The two community forums, this is pictures of our recent events, was very collaborative, very bilateral. We could work through these, we would need time to plan, we would need time to do logistics and maybe present you with a plan as to how to do that. But this is, we have a tradition of doing these events with the community and I think they're excellent events and with some planning and resource allocation, we could come back to you in the future if you, if we, if you feel like this is something you would want us to pursue. Again, similar type questions, we're thinking maybe two or three in a year with a cadence so that the community knows we're going to have them at a certain time, maybe spring and fall. We are interested in the idea of doing the two different meetings, although with your direction, we can certainly pivot however you'd like us to go. And then I think this is much more of an iterative conversation about the role that the council would play. Where do you see yourselves interacting back and forth through the agenda? Because we can design it, we're very, we can be very creative as to how we design that interplay.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Black.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Jim. I didn't thank you at the outset. Thank you. And thank David for putting this together too.
He did the work.
For you pinch hitting. So I've already said how much I like toward the informal meetings and stuff that's sort of, sort of ready to go. On this one, what I would say is, we've got a lot on our city work program and this is just one of those items. And I think, I'll give you some guidance on what I think is the most effective format. But I also just think probably we need to spend more time thinking about whether the formal events with a specific cadence, I want to think about that some more. Because, because here's where I'm at right now. I, I like these for where we have a meaty topic, like where it's been really effective. The homelessness action plan discussions, I think that World Cafe format, for something that we were, we really, really wanted to talk to the community about. I think it's really effective for that. Just, you know, I wouldn't probably view this as sort of open topics. I think it's more important when we're, the community members who are interested in this topic, who have something important that they either want to share or something important, or they're really interested in learning, they're coming because they know what we're talking about. And we also, and frankly, the reason I think this also needs more thought about whether to have a specific cadence is just, there's all, I talked about the work program. The staff has a lot to do and this, we need to be sensitive to the staff's capacity and also the council member's capacity because there's so much that we do, both formally and informally. So I just want to think about this. This is one where I want to think about some more. And I'll say, I really, really like the format, the tabling format of the World Cafe format because what we saw was, we saw not just, it was an opportunity for me not just to hear from the community, but for the community to talk to the community. That was the most powerful thing about that discussion, was being at a table with community members, with, playing all different types of roles in our community, sharing their ideas, sharing their concerns and learning from each other. And while I'm sitting there, I'm learning. Like, that was, that was just such a powerful opportunity. That's why, I, that's really my favorite format on specific topics where we can invite people and say, listen, this is what, we're going to share ideas on these, we're going to share concerns on these ideas and we're going to learn from each other on these ideas. So that's kind of the direction I want to go, whether we do it on a specific cadence, whether we do it with sort of, you know, undefined subject matter, I really want to think about that. And I really want to pay attention to the capacity that the staff and the city manager's office has and the capacity, frankly, that the council has. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the last time we talked about this was our council retreat, right? And I remember my kind of frame of mind then was, what is the community asking for? What does the community need as far as engagement with council? And there's kind of that, you know, catch-all, anything that's on someone's mind. We do have items from the audience and people can always contact us via email or call us, but having like a regular, you know, the informal events, like you already mentioned, I feel like really get at that, that need in the community, to have additional capacity and FaceTime with council members where it's not just talking to us and us silently listening, but having that real engagement where whatever is on folks' minds, we can talk about. I feel like the informal events captures that. When we were at the council retreat, I feel like I was thinking, maybe we needed some of that in the formal events as well. But as we've talked through and as I've been listening to my fellow council members and reading the memo, I really feel like the informal events gets at that. And I'm saying that because I agree with Councilwoman Black, that I feel like these formal events and having that World Cafe format really lends itself well to specific topics and big topics. And earlier tonight, we talked through planning work program and city work plan. I was going to misspeak and mess those up, but I think I got that right. And so I would, similar to Councilwoman Black, I want us to be thoughtful about this and think through, I mean, we kind of know over the next couple of years, the big stuff we're going to be talking about. Let's kind of generally map out which one of those topics, which ones of those topics would be good potential topics for World Cafe format. Maybe come back to us with what those could be. Because I think that'll kind of give us an idea of how we can, it doesn't mean we can't be flexible and if something comes up at another World Cafe type of event, if there's another thing that we weren't already planning on in one of those two plans or work programs. And so I'd like to see us have that kind of, just kind of general idea and that'll give us an idea of the cadence, right? Of how many we're going to need, how much work it's going to be, and prioritizing which ones we should do this kind of format with. So I think perhaps that gets at Councilwoman Black's thinking, I think, if I'm hearing correctly, of kind of being thoughtful. I agree that informal events are low-hanging fruit. We can start that, I think the memo talked about, maybe, you know, pretty soon, within the next month or so. But for these formal events, I'd like to map out and think through which topics would be best for that. And I don't see the need for that other kind of town hall event. It's like, I feel like that need, just to reiterate, I think is being met, or will be met with the informal event. That's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim, David team, for thinking through this. When I think about what you're throwing out here for engagement, I'm looking at it on a couple of different axes. One is, are we having a big public hearing where we can hear from more people than we can during items from the audience? Or are we looking at something that's more interactive? That's one axis. Is it something that we're focusing on a specific topic or is it open? That's another axis. And then what's the capacity that we're putting into something compared to the priority of an issue we're talking about? And that kind of gets to what we used for what topic. And I think that's what Councilwoman Falcone was going at. It's got to be contextual based on the issues and other outreach that we're doing. I really liked the World Cafe. It worked really well for the homelessness. It worked really well for the homelessness forum, and want to take advantage of that for the interactive opportunity. There may be cases, and the gun safety town hall that we did years ago was a good example of one, where we, where we know the community has a lot to say to us, that we want to have a big public hearing, but that was topic-based.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure of whether we're getting what we need, and the community is getting what they expect, if we have the open town hall, open topic town hall, where folks are bringing stuff to us, but we don't have a chance to respond in real time. And that's something where the World Cafe was really interesting. So I want to be intentional about that, open topic versus, specific topic versus kind of open, open, free-for-all. So as we look at that, I think we're going to be, my feedback would be focused more on the World Cafe, but it's going to be context-based on the issues. And I'd like to see kind of the public engagement plan that corresponds to the work program that we just passed, to be able to say, okay, here's what we think is appropriate for this topic, here's what we think is appropriate for this topic.
Yeah.
Versus saying, we're going to have a town hall for the sake of a town hall, it may or may not be appropriate. Thank you.
That's really helpful for staff.
Anyone else?
Strongly agree with everything you heard. I think that these are great tools, but I like the word that Deputy Mayor just used, is we just need to use them intentionally, that they need to be context-based. So I think you've got the right feedback.
Thank you. And I think we're getting a good idea of what resources we need, so we can have that communication as well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're moving along to our final business item, which is the 2025 legislative session update. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So here to give you that presentation, once again, is Diana Hart, our Government Affairs Manager. We are going to be presenting kind of an overview of the state budgets and revenue packages that were just released as one key part of this tonight.
Good evening, Council.
Welcome.
So today is day 79 of the 105-day-long session. We're officially in our last month of session, which is very exciting. It's been a long one. Tomorrow was the last day of policy committees, with some exceptions for the NTIB bills. As you're all aware, the operating, transportation, and capital budgets have been dropped in both the House and Senate, along with numerous revenue proposals for both. Operating budgets have advanced out of both, both the House and Senate, and will now head to negotiations. Looking at our legislative priorities, House Bill 1791, which is the REIT bill, is scheduled to move out of the Senate Fiscal Committee later this week. So we're on track for removing the expiration of flexibility for affordable housing from REIT, which is great news. It's looking like a new REIT increment is unlikely this year, especially with the number of other new revenue proposals that are on the table. But if it ends up not making it this year, we'll likely continue advocating for it in the future, or bring it back for council's review of having it on our agenda in the Next item will drop down to the transportation revenue. The transportation budgets are a mix of success when it comes to the maintenance of revenue sharing with local governments. The House proposal includes a gas tax increase, which they propose maintaining the 6% sharing of revenues with locals, and a handful of other revenue proposals, and which includes a new highway use fee, which is also being posed as a mini RUC or mini road usage charge. None of those funds are anticipated to be shared with locals under the current proposal. The Senate proposal includes a variety of new revenue sources. It's a 136-page-long bill that they introduced for all of the funding sources they have, and does include a gas tax increase, but does not propose any revenue sharing with their proposals, and instead offers a one-time bump to TIB. Local governments, including Kirkland, are continuing to advocate for revenue sharing with local governments to ensure maintenance of this essential funding source beyond one-time increases. Dropping down to the, our little PRIA bill, Senate Bill 4090 moved out of the House Policy Committee yesterday, with Councilmember Black testifying in support last week. Staff and our lobbyists are working closely with our legislators to ensure there's a path forward for this bill out of the House. And dropping down to our budget requests, while the transportation budget doesn't include any new projects this year, meaning our sidewalk project was not funded, there was great news in the capital budget yesterday. Both the Kamaiken Gym Expansion and Peter Kirk Pool are included in the House proposal at $515,000 each, which is technically above our request for both. Our delegation has developed an effective strategy of splitting requests across members and the aisle to increase the likelihood of success. So while we're not currently in the Senate proposal, we're optimistic about our chances of these projects being funded in the final budget. So, very, very, very exciting news there. Yeah.
That is wonderful. Thank you.
So legislative actions, the Legislative Work Group has signed in on the following bills related to property taxes, permitting, public property lease, housing, and behavioral That takes us through our priorities. Start with our flag, that the bill tracker stated position in the packet is a recommended position by the Legislative Work Group, and is considered acknowledged by council after this discussion unless you want to pull any out for further conversation or adjustment. And then we'll go to our primary item for discussion tonight, which is the operating budget revenue proposals. The numerous operating budget proposals introduced in this House and Senate to address the state's budget shortfall. Since the writing of the memo, Mayor Curtis joined several mayors from around the region, raising concerns with the BNO tax and payroll tax proposals. The Senate's payroll tax modeled off of Seattle's Jump Start Tax is a 5% tax on large employers with more than $7 million in payroll expenses on salaries above the Social Security threshold, currently at $176,000 per year, impacting around 5,000 companies across Washington and generating $2.3 billion a year for the state. The House's BNO tax is a 1% surcharge on businesses with taxable income over $250 million, which is around 400 businesses, and an increase on financial institutions with annual net income over $1 billion, which is around 200 businesses, generating nearly $2 billion in 2027. AWC worked closely with budget writers in developing the property tax cap lift proposals introduced in the House and Senate. The Senate proposals lifts the cap to the combined rate of population growth plus inflation with a tie to public safety needs. The House proposal allows for increases up to the combined rate of population growth plus inflation with a cap of 3% under an overall proposal to fund K-12 and public safety. As a reminder, prior to the 1% cap was set by the legislature in response to a ballot measure in the early 2000s, the property taxes, property taxes could be increased to population growth plus inflation with a cap of 6%. Senate held a public hearing on their five revenue proposals yesterday. The House is holding a public hearing on their three proposals on Thursday. Legislative Work Group is signing in support on both the property tax cap lift bills in alignment with the city's general principles. So with that, we'll turn things back to you. As always, happy to answer any questions you have, either now or anytime throughout the week.
Thank you, Diana. Council, any questions, comments? Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to highlight you breezed over, but wanted to highlight and thank you, and thank the Legislative Work Group for supporting the agenda items of the school district on the, on the school funding. That's something that I know isn't directly city-related, but really, as we have in so many of our conversations, discussions of funding for schools, and making sure that the schools get the resources they need in our community, is definitely a priority that helps our constituents and helps families in our, in our city. So just wanted to highlight that and say thank you so much, and I really value the partnership with the school district, and, oh, thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Councilmember Black?
Just briefly, thank, thank you, Diana. Just thank you for coming and presenting all that information so succinctly. I appreciate it. I didn't want you to walk away and not get thanked. Everyone else who comes to the podium gets thanked. It would have been unfair if you hadn't been.
Did you thank her?
I know.
She did. All right. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. That's great news on the pool. It'd be great to hear in the future exactly kind of what, what, what we're doing to the pool, and if we're going to, what the schedule is. But I think that would be, that wonderful work. Thank you. And love to be able to let the community know kind of exactly what we're doing with the money. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, Diana. But I do want to acknowledge Councilmember Tim Chisen's enthusiasm, which is, which was appropriate, because it's a tough budget year, and I was really amazed to see those two items in the budget. And I've received a number of letters, people asking me to sign on more letters to, because their capital requests were not included in the budget. So we were very fortunate, and we have our delegation to thank for that, because they advocated strongly on our behalf. So we should send them a note. But again, any other comments, questions for Diana? Wonderful. Thank you so much. See you Friday. All right, we are moving along. We are now on council reports. So I'm going to start with Deputy Mayor, because he's going to talk about the King County Park Levy.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you recall, at our last meeting, I reported on the county executive's proposal for the renewal of the county park levy. And it had a significant increase in the amount, going from 18 cents to 24.43 cents. But it did include increases in pass-through funding to city park systems. It included funding for East Trail, it included funding for aquatics. But Sound Cities had some concerns over the overall size of the levy, given just concern about a big increase in property tax with this. Since then, King County's Budget and Financial Committee met to discuss the parks levy, and County Councilmember Dombowski had a revised proposal that reduced the size of the levy by a penny, or a little less than a penny, and maintained the East Trail and aquatic grants total, but also included some other changes. The pass-through formula for the cities was modified to address some equity issues, and especially with South King County, but that updated formula negatively impacted several eastside cities and the point cities significantly. That's on the negative side. On the positive side, there were increased allocations for the Green Loop Trail, which was funded up to $10 million, and a direct allocation for aquatics facilities in Kirkland at $2.5 million. It also included the Pacific Science Center and other priorities of county council members. That striking, striker amendment proposal passed through the Budget and Fiscal Management Committee with several other amendments. It next goes to the Regional Policy Committee that I sit on. There's a meeting this Thursday to consider that amended proposal. To the issues that I've talked about, Sound Cities will be proposing some amendments to return to the original formula for the city pass-through, and address equity in different ways. There was, will be a proposal for having a requirement for zip code level reporting on levy spending, like the county does for other levies, and a geographic equity study. There also may be a proposal for further scaling down of the levy. And I wanted to check in with the council about how I proceed with RPC. What I am recommending is that my goals be to protect Kirkland's pass-through share, maintain funding for the city priorities, but also scale down the levy as much as possible, which would, may have the, the same allocations, or the same categories of allocations, but scaled back to see if we can get more than a penny of savings. So I wanted to get some concurrence on that, or any feedback.
Thumbs up for Councilmember Sweet. Oh, you did. Yeah, any, council, any questions for Deputy Mayor? Can I, is there anyone that objects to his proposed strategy when he goes RPC? Do your best work, and you have our support behind you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else you want to cover?
This, last week, I had the opportunity to go to Atlanta for my day job. I spent an afternoon on the Atlanta Beltway, which was, is a trail around Atlanta, a rail-to-trail conversion around Atlanta. They're about 10 years ahead of where we are with East Trail and the cross Kirkland. Or I will have a bunch of pictures and observations to share in the next week or so. But it was really interesting to spend some day, a day out there and see what they were doing.
That's awesome. Councilmember Pascal.
Thank you. So been a lot of events. I know everyone's been going to a lot of different things. I had an opportunity to go to a few neighborhood meetings the last couple of weeks. One, the Market Neighborhood. It's good, just kind of Q and A, kind of what was on the mind of folks. And then the Finn Hill Neighborhood meeting last week, which was the most well-attended Finn Hill meeting I'd been to. Packed house. And the staff did a great job of presenting, the planning staff, and Jason was there for Parks. So great, great information shared with, with the community. I had my TIB meeting last week, a number of topics. The one topic that we did talk quite extensively about was the state budget, and that, that impacts the Transportation Improvement Board. It had been, I guess, a decade or more since the TIB had actually penned a letter to the state legislature, and the budget was significant, significant enough issue that we felt that we needed to do that. And because, you know, if the House budget passes and revenue starts to divert from the gas tax to the road usage charge, it effectively will sunset TIB. Because a TIB is dependent, it has a set aside of three cents of every, of the gas tax that goes to TIB. That funds basically all the small cities across the state, their pavement program. There's no other way they would ever maintain their transportation system without TIB. And then the more than 200 cities that get grants every year for their capital improvement, sidewalks, complete streets, and so forth. So it's a pretty big deal, and, and the executive director, you know, had never really kind of faced this issue before. He always said that TIB always kind of ate first, and this was the first time that we weren't invited to the table. So that's just kind of shows you what's going on down in the state legislature. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Falcone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few highlights. Since our last meeting, Councilmember Tim Chisen and I toured Plymouth Housing in, in Bellevue, and it was, we learned a lot about how Plymouth operates, and so I think that was really informative. So thank you to them for inviting us on that tour. I know others on council have toured that property previously as well. I've also attended a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings. Juanita and I attended Finn Hill Neighborhood Alliance remotely. I had to stay home with a sick child that night. So thank you to Finn Hill Neighborhood Alliance for having that remotely streamed, so I could participate that way. Also attended with a lot of amazing women, plus city manager for part of it, the 30 Annual Kirkland Women's Leadership Summit. I'll let the other women on council talk a little bit more about that. Was able to be there for about an hour of it, had a few side conversations during it too, and so got some work done that day as well. And it was just fantastic. I mean, just the, the, such an uplifting and empowering vibe that was there that day, and just so many staff members from different departments and different places in their careers, all together. It was, it was pretty amazing to see, and I can only imagine how wonderful the rest of the day was that I wasn't there for. So thank you so much to everybody who organized it. I know it's a great team effort. I know Jill, you did, you know, spearheaded that, but there's so many great folks on your team in organizing that. So kudos to you, and thank you for continuing to lead that. It's just such a beautiful event. Tomorrow, a few of us will be touring the North Seattle Transfer Station, I believe, Deputy Mayor Arnold and Councilmember Pascal and I. I saw on the invite for that, so looking forward to that. Also looking forward with the mayor, enjoying the Earth Month kickoff event with Sustainability Ambassadors later this week. Next week, some great events, the pitch competition on Wednesday at Kirkland Performance Center, For the Love of Kirkland Workshop next Thursday. There's a lot of cool stuff happening. This is exciting. Lots of other meetings that I won't bore you with, but important things going on, Affordable Housing Committee and King Conservation District and other meetings as well. And finally, I've been advised by the city manager that this is the most appropriate place to share this. I want to share that I plan to miss the May 6th meeting. I will be chaperoning my youngest child Rocky's sleepaway camp that week. So I will probably be roasting marshmallows around a campfire about the time that you'll be kicking off your council meeting that night. This is the first time that I have chosen to miss a council meeting and prioritize family, but it's a really special opportunity that I get to chaperon that for my first grader, so I'm not going to miss that opportunity, and I'm looking forward to it. So I hope that you will all please excuse my absence that evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet.
Okay, just very briefly, lots of stuff going on.
Okay, just very briefly, um, lots of stuff going on with regional water quality, just sort of...
Sorry.
I used to leave it on all the time.
I know, that's what I do.
Um, anyway, um, just sort of organizing to organize for water quality. So Carley and I have been jointly, um, meeting with representatives from MUPAC and, uh, the Chair of Ca, the Caucus, I'm the Vice Chair of the Caucus, and we are really just sort of getting ready to move forward with, with, um, a new system for, um, for regional water quality moving forward. Cascade Water Alliance, um, couple things going on. I am chairing the CEO hiring process for them. We'll begin that next week. I believe I have a committee, um, but, uh, trying to get everything in a row there. Unfortunately, um, Ray Hoffman has been very, very ill, and he's been out of the office for several weeks now. Uh, we do anticipate he's gonna come back and he's gonna work really hard this last couple of months, but, uh, it's made this transition a little di, difficult in terms of getting ready for, um, for his replacement. But staff are amazing and they are pulling everything together, so I'm looking forward to that process. Um, just to add to Amy's comment on the Women's Leadership Group, Julie, eh, eh, put this on the very top of your resume. Um, it is absolutely so impressive, um, to have that many women invol, eh, eh, and just so connected in terms of the messages that they're delivering to one another about this process, about the, sort of the enrichment that it is giving to folks. I was, well, we were all in tears, but it was, it was fabulous. Um, Mizwak, I don't need to talk anymore about that. Um, and I think that's, oh, there was a RIAA meeting, and I think, uh, Rachel will be sending those minutes out.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, not a lot to report. I did wanna mention, um, the Regional Transit Committee did meet. Um, I was not able to attend that meeting, and due to just being in transition with staff and more, we didn't attend that. That was pretty routine adoption of a work plan for twenty-twenty-five that had, um, undergone a ton of previous discussion, and then, um, a continuation of, um, a briefing from Metro regarding the research that they do, uh, internally, and then finally, uh, a discussion of the fair inspect, the return of, um, fair inspections and enforcement, which has been well documented in the news. Um, I, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that I, and Deputy Mayor did not mention this, so I'm gonna ask him. I think we have, we're meeting tomorrow with the Senior Counsel and the Transportation Committee to talk about, um, local transit circuit service, or am I wrong?
It, we are.
Okay.
I had not, I, I'm kind of just in time in meeting prep, so.
Me too.
You know more about it than, than I do.
Uh, no, 'cause I literally wasn't sure if we had it or not. Um, so we, Deputy Mayor and I, Arnold and I will be well, well-prepared, uh, before that meeting tomorrow to discuss with our Senior Counsel some of their ideas, their Transportation Committee's ideas on, um, on, uh, mobility in Kirkland, so that should be fascinating, and, uh, we'll commit to reporting back to you, uh, what we've heard. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. Uh, I, uh, attended the Plymouth Housing Tour with Councilmember Falcone. Um, that was eye-opening. Um, I attended, um, shh, shh, shh. Uh, what did I attend? I attended the, uh, Young Men's Service League, um, event with their mothers and talked to them about sexual assault, so if you ever wanna have an awkward conversation, uh, it was interesting but informative, and their mothers were there and the guys were there, and so it was, uh, interesting conversation, to say the least. Um, I served my first game as a Little League umpire this, this, uh, this season, and that is, uh, less, that is more challenging than being on the City Council, and less popular, especially if you make a bad call. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have had a number of regional meetings. I had the honor of writing with the chief to the Transit Safety Meeting. Um, she will not take me in a squad car, which just makes me so sad. So, um, I had the Growth Management Planning Commission, PRS, PRSC, PSRC exec meeting, um, which we spent most of the time on the resolution that, that I sent to you, um, and Councilmember Pascal, the Washington Transit, Transportation Commission had the same concerns that TIB did, that they are also being cut out of the, uh, region, the state budget. Deputy City Manager and I attended the Corolla inaugural event on Saturday, and we were treated by so kindly and so warmly. Um, it was really a wonderful event, and, um, they love him. So Jim gets hugs everywhere he goes. It's pretty wonderful. Um, Julie, I can't top what the two of these women said about the Women's Leadership Event. It was, it's incredibly powerful, and you and your team should be really proud of the work you've done. Um, I have the honor of speaking on Thursday with the Sustainability Ambassadors, and as Councilmember, uh, Falcone already covered, next week is Pitch Competition, and Love for Kirkland's gonna be fun. So, City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have, uh, two quick announcements. Um, as I mentioned, during the city work program, we did receive on last Friday, a pretty detailed proposal from the Kraken, um, that would be responsive to RFP. Uh, we'll be reviewing that with our, uh, technical team and coming back to the Council to talk about that in the future, but, um, it looks very responsive, and so, um, we continue to move forward. And in the meantime, we're also working on, uh, turning all of our term sheets into definitive documents that will be negotiated between us and the Kraken, so a lot of positive energy happening there. So happy to answer any questions on that.
I see none.
Okay, and then, secondly, I think you all saw this, but we did, the city did officially appeal the FEIS, the Final Environmental Impact Statement, um, for King County's Northeast Region Recycling Transfer Station. Um, that was due on March twenty-seventh, so we had to do that prior to the council meeting. We did officially, um, submit the appeal. We've now updated our webpage. There's the statement that I've made as City Manager on March twenty-seventh regarding the appeal, and a frequent ask question section, and we're gonna continue to update that, and we'll be probably scheduling a briefing to come back in front of the Council, um, in the next few council meetings to provide more details. Uh, the short version, though, is we've appealed both in process. We think there are some errors made on how the decision, the FEIS, was issued, and also in substance, and we found some areas where we didn't feel it was responsive, and so, uh, we'll continue to work through that program, um, and we'll be keeping the Council updated, so just wanted to make sure. If anyone had any questions.
Councilmember Black does.
Oh, just one, real quick, I wanted to underscore something, 'cause you, you glossed over it just a little bit, the website. So if a resident searches "City of Kirkland NERTS" in ERTS, they'll get our, uh, the city's website with the information, including the FAQ.
They will, absolutely.
And updated. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, and those are the only updates that I have. Is there any Council calendar, uh, questions or suggestions, other than Councilmember Falcone's noting about not being at the council meeting?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, we are now gonna go into executive session to discuss litigation as authorized by RCW forty-two thirty-one ten-one I two. We expect to reconvene for a regular meeting at approximately ten-thirty, um, only for the purpose of adjournment. Thank you, everyone.